Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I'll start here if there's anyone on the line. You want the audience? Okay. For tour business line five.
Great, to the lease of property at 166 Chestnut Street for personal wireless services, antennas and related equipment. We had been here at a previous meeting to present the proposal that we had received, which happened to be to continue Crown Castle's use of the land in question for their existing cell tower. And then along with it, there's a number of sub leases. We are joined here this evening by the Director of Public Works, who is joining us virtually. Joe, I'm going to ask you to unmute, see if that works.
Evening.
Can you try that again, Joe?
Yes, good evening, can you hear me?
It's a little faint. See if I can fix that.
I'm not sure if there's an adjustment.
Oh, there we go, much better. All right, you should be able to start your video now, too.
There we go.
Great.
Thank you.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, we have been working with Town Council with regard to the lease itself, and we have finalized some items that were sort of up in the air internally here. We've had one round of back and forth with Crown Castle, but we are awaiting their response on a second round, or we believe final round of back and forth. And this is involving the terms of the lease. It doesn't involve material issues because the proposal they're bound by, the term and the cost, has already been settled by the bid. Joe, it might be good just for the board, just to kind of summarize the issues that have been in play or are in play right now.
That'd be great, can I share my screen?
You should, let me see if I can enable that. All right, try that.
How's that look?
It's very small in here, but we'll take care of it.
Bring it in a little bit. Any better?
There you go.
All right. Yeah, quickly, I can go through this. So, the, just the first thing here noted in, just that the new lease agreement would begin the fourth day of April, May, rather, 2025. The expiration of the current one goes to third of May, so this would start at the new 20-year, maximum 20 years, it's five-year terms, so this one is actually for five years. And will be able to be renewed every five years thereafter for a maximum 20 years. But I believe you saw this in your package, for the most part, I'll go through and try to highlight the things that will be discussed very shortly with Crown Castle. Just trying to finalize a few things. What we come across is just a better description of their access to the property. There is the main access way off of Chestnut Street, which if you've driven by the DPW garage, you've all been on that asphalt roadway, it leads now further beyond to the MRLD.
RMLD.
Still, RMLD, rather, I'm sorry. And so the, off of that, though, as you reach the gates of the DPW yard itself, there's another little access easement that allows them to go straight to the cell tower. So this is just some cleanup language here for a map that's also shown as Exhibit A.
Thank you, Joe.
Down to the next, so there's no terms, change in the terms, that's locked in. So there is just a simplification that attorney agreement sort of decided would be everybody's best interest, tenant's obligation paid, rent shall commence on the commencement date. That's basically the May 4th date that we saw at the beginning of this document. So this is some language that I put in there that I thought, you know, was important as, you know, managing the payments of the sub tenants, those are in addition to, you know, Crown Castle's anchor tenant, Verizon, there are some sub tenants that they're having on the tower, and we're splitting, the rent fees 51%, 49% with town getting 51%. It's sometimes difficult to ensure that all the payments are being made timely, and that if the payments changed in some, due to some lease agreements, we want to sort of stand top of all of that. So it's difficult now to change those leases as they are still current, but when they expire, basically, we're looking for the Crown Castle, the tenant, to make payment directly to the town. We're also acknowledging that there's, you know, the anchor tenant is Verizon Wireless, and so we will, you know, get new copies of lease agreements and, you know, continue to get payments from the sub tenants until, if and until the new leases are made with the other sub tenants. Any questions on this? I'll pause here, it's a little bit more than a few words. But I think pretty much summarized what that was saying.
So, Joe, as far as the five-year terms, that's at the discretion of the tenant, right, not the town? So they get to renew or walk away every five years? They get to make that determination?
Yeah, there's some language here for notification if they're going to renew the lease with the town. So we'll, we certainly expect that they will unless there's a sudden change in the, you know, the market for carriers.
Right, so they have to give us 90 days' notice, it looks like.
Yeah, I believe that was it, that was the timeframe, so.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else?
Any, Mr. O'Leary, any thought, Mr. Chairman, you, any thought to change those terms? Because I kind of agree with what you.
No, I, I mean, what's happening out in the marketplace is what's going to drive, whether or not we have a tenant, whether the cell towers continue to play a role. So I understand that trepidation in relation to signing a 20-year deal, who knows what the technology's going to be five, 10, 15 years from now? So this appears to be the best deal we can strike at this point, five-year increments, hopefully at least through 10 years, we'll have a good, strong-paying tenant here. But, you know, what the technology brings beyond that, I just think, just for transparency purposes, it's important for everybody to understand that it's at the tenant's discretion, not the town's. It's a 20-year agreement where they've got us locked in for 20 years, but for each five-year interval, they have the opportunity with 90 days' notice to change their mind, so.
Any, any thought to, for this board, to make it a little longer? Whether it's 180 days, give us, give the town more time to react than 90 days if someone's...
I think if whoever proud is, Verizon decides that they don't want the tower, you know, it's going to be, we'll have 90 days' notice and put a request for proposals out anyway, and if there's someone else out there that wants to hop on the tower, you know, they can do that, but it appears to be reasonable in relation to what's happening in the marketplace and technology-wise.
Mr. Gonzalez, any?
No.
No, you can cut it. Do we have a motion? Or do you want to add something, Mr. Gilberto?
With it, just two, just a couple of remaining substantive changes, or not even substantive, but notable changes, Joe, could you just touch on those?
Yeah, let me go through the others quickly. So, again, just a few things that I've added to, just sort of be more specific that, you know, there would be some direct payments to the landlord for, on a tenant if they were to get interest through agreements with sub tenants. So this is just confirming that during the duration of any due diligence period or permit period, that the landlord, the tenant will continue to pay rent to the landlord. Just a section where they, Crown Castle had added some language that gave us, you know, at the start of 60 days, we have, you know, have to start the wheels of motion to cure it in a fall, but they were saying we must be completed, you know, within 60 days thereafter. So I just struck that, go back to the original language. I'm not sure why they, you know, wanted to sort of make that finite, but, you know, I can understand why, but I, but I think one never knows, you know, how long it'll take to cure it default, and we don't want ourselves short of time, but we'll continue that discussion with them, shouldn't be a big deal either way. Just give the town a little bit more time, 45 days to make any payments back to the prepaid rent, if were to be the case where there's a default and they chose to end the agreement.
But basically, they're paying us a month in advance, right? I think that's what I read, it's that they're paying, basically, the beginning of the month, other month, so they're paying us a month.
Yeah, they're paying in advance at the beginning of each month, so the first payment, you know, will be pro-rated, so from, you know, May 4th to the end of the month will be slightly less than a full month. But each month thereafter will be on the first of the full payment. So I believe that is it. There is also, if I can just show you the, if you want to see, and I don't know if it's necessary, but Exhibit A, and there's Exhibit B, which is the memorandum of lease, so that would be filed at the registry deeds.
I think the plan are existing conditions, which are down there, so if you're familiar with the site, the roadway comes in, the plan shows an easement that cuts across the yard, if you will, a fenced-in portion of the yard to the, to the tower. What I do think we should just show up there, Joe, is the memorandum of lease, just because the intention would be to record that at the registry deeds, so I do think that we should make sure that the board just sees that. You should be able to share, Joe?
Yep.
It's on the screen, but I think some of the folks who are accessing virtually may not be seeing it, but it describes a memorandum of lease, a document that indicates there's a lease between the town and Crown Castle for the property located at 166 Chestnut Street, notifying folks who were to look at the registry that there is a lease that's encumbering a portion of the property for this purpose for the, for the town. I think that's it, Joe, right?
That was it, so just, since you're by town administrator and O'Leary, and that should be filed at the registry, correct?
So, Mr. Chairman, through you are, as we resolve the remaining language issues with the attorneys for Crown Castle, we have proposed a motion, I think Mr. Massey has, that would authorize you to sign the lease once issues are resolved between the attorneys, without any substantive or material changes being made to it. We would appreciate the board voting on that. It also will authorize the recording of the memorandum of lease. The board wants to see it in final form, we certainly can make it available, and if it wishes to see it in final form before voting, we would urge that the board consider a meeting between now and the next meeting, because this is dated, I think it's May 3rd, right? That's in question, so that's before our next meeting, we want to make sure that we continue this. But we believe that the issues are not substantive, and if they are, I'll certainly alert you, Mr. Chairman.
While we have the motion, then I'll do further discussion.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Mr. Chairman, I move that the select board enter into a ground release with Crown Atlantic Company LLC upon the terms presented to lease a portion of the town land located at 166 Chestnut Street, assessors map 36 lot 65. For telecommunications purposes, to authorize the chair upon consultation with Town Council to approve such revisions to the lease prior to execution as may be agreed upon with the leasing that are consistent with the intent of the present terms and without altering the terms as to lease term and compensation, and to execute the lease in a memorandum of lease in the form attached as Exhibit C to the lease on the board's behalf, said memorandum to be recorded with the registry of deeds.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, for further discussion, I'll just start. And like Mr. Gilberto says, if we vote this in and there's any substantial change, then we just nix it, and we have a pop-up meeting if we have to via Zoom just for this one item. So that's kind of, I agree. Anyone else want to?
So the changes that are going to be in it are what we saw here in red.
So those changes will be made, but this document, I'm sorry, so this document's going to be sent to Crown Castle and their attorneys, so they're going to review things, including the changes that you've seen that have shown up on the screen here. If there's, you know, they may have minor adjustments to wording, I don't think we would be asking for another vote of the board if that happened. If there's a material issue that comes up, then I would consult with the chair, and we would want you to review it and weigh in on it. If that doesn't work for the board, or for the majority of the board, we certainly can just ask for a meeting separately. We're trying to avoid that, we know we've had a lot of meetings over the past couple of weeks, so I leave it up to the board, though.
Okay. Aldo? Aldos in favor? Aye.
Thank you for all your evidence, this is an important revenue source for us.
Yeah.
It has been for about 30 years now, so it's, it's good that it's come to fruition again, and at least five years under our belt moving forward, and hopefully much longer.
Great. Joe, thank you, appreciate your time. The next item, 9 Mill Street, so I know that we had had a discussion at a meeting in January, there was an initial request to proceed with having an appraisal of the property conducted. We were subsequently asked by the board if we would be able to stop the appraisal process from going forward, we were able to without taking any sort of a loss, or we think overly damaging any business relationships. I do think it leaves open a question in terms of whether we have a minimum or reserve price that we would want included in the request for proposals, keeping in mind that from the registry of deeds records, we acquired the property for $700,000 in 2017, that it is assessed at $799,000 according to the assessor's records. It might show up at Realtor.com or Zillow at a lower number than that, we are aware of that. Some of the key things I think I should also convey is, we've had a couple of paydowns on the property, meaning that we've paid down principal on it, but that's, again, money that's sunk into the property, probably most notably, we have had to make short-term interest payments on it over that period of time, and those totaled, I think it was $117,000, so I just kind of want the board to be aware of that. I think the assessed value is probably the number we can point to and probably best to stick by. The risk with that, obviously, is that we don't get anybody who's willing to come in at that number, and I guess in a worst-case scenario, we would quickly, because we're up against timelines with regard to short-term borrowing, put it back out, you know, perhaps with a different number. But, you know, to me, a starting point at that 799, you're recovering mostly short-term costs, we can point right to the assessor's records as a source for it. It's an acceptable standard for valuing property under chapter 30B, so.
You mean as a reserve bid?
As a reserve bid price, yeah. It could be more, to go for more than that.
Okay.
And, you know, we may get bids that are less and maintain the ability to reject all bids as well, or reject a bid that's over that. And it would again be for the continued allowed use within zoning, which is single-family in that area.
Hard comments?
Mr. Massey?
No, I think that's, I think that's a great approach. I think that covers all the short-term costs, and you can point to some data, too. And 799 always sounds better than 800.
Yeah.
Mr. Wong, Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, give it a shot.
All right.
Just surprised that Zillow came at like 6.24.
Yeah, that's, that's a good piece of land, I don't know.
Is it four point, is it really four acres?
It's a good-sized parcel, I mean, it does have some good land on it.
It's a significant amount of wetlands on there.
Can you divide it?
And in the highland, we are retaining as an easement. Future use will be big. If I quit the select board. It's a good piece. Can always reset it.
Cabin motion, please, Mr. Massey.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the issuance of a request for proposal for the disposition of 9 Mill Street in a form substantially similar to the version reviewed this evening, and to establish a minimum bid price of $799,000.
Seven ninety-nine, two hundred, to be exact, sorry.
$799,200.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, appreciate that, appreciate the help of the DPW Director, Joe, thanks for joining us tonight, and Town Planner, who's also helped us with the RFP, working through things with Town Council. The engineer is involved, yes, that's right.
A lot of people involved dealing with me over the past several months and years as far as the disposition of this property, so good, hopefully it comes to fruition.
So this, it will not be posted in the traditional MLS locations, but it will be on the town website, it will be in the newspaper, it will be in the central register as well, so, you know, folks who are looking for real estate in town, we urge you to take a look.
Except for fear on this board.
What does it cost to get it published like that, Zillow or?
We can look into that, I.
I think the problem, don't you have to, my understanding is you have to have a broker's agreement.
Right.
With the broker to do it, and they're not going to do it on the house.
Well, I know they're not going to do it on the house, but as far as visibility-wise, it's significant.
We'll, we'll look into that to the extent the procurement laws allow us to.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, so one last question, is we selling it as-is, just in case there's any issues?
I believe that's the intention, yeah. Joe, it's listed as-is, right?
Mitigating liability.
You can't unmute that.
But you're going to allow anybody to go in with their inspectors and take a look?
So, yeah, we have two dates that we're planning to have, I guess, meetings, you know, pre-smittel meetings, and if someone called and didn't make those dates, we certainly can take it through as well.
But it would be as-is, if they find, I mean, we have a Title V that's clean on it at this point, based on repairs we made to some of the equipment associated with the septic system, right, Joe? So, for all intents and purposes, it's as-is, but if we're not, what if we weren't looking to get into making additional repairs to the property? It has fared very well, given how long it's been vacant, because of the care that DPW has given it over the years. Thanks again, Joe. The next item, the Mobile Home Rent Control Discontinuance Permit Application, it's listed as 144 Main Street, the properties are usually addressed in tandem, 142-144 Main Street, it's known as Perry's Park Mobile Home. For those who don't know, the town has a Mobile Home Rent Control Board, it has a Mobile Home Rent Control Bylaw that's authorized by a special act of the legislature, which regulates mobile homes in the interest of preserving the affordability, not affordable under chapter 40B, but affordability in terms of rent costs, and also any potential discontinuance of the use as a mobile home park. The owner has applied to discontinue the use, this is a procedural step, we have already forwarded the request to the Mobile Home Rent Control Board, it was forwarded when it was received on, I believe, March 31st by, by the Town Hall. We were advised by Town Council to have the board formally vote to refer the matter to the Mobile Home Rent Control Board, so that they can go through the process of reviewing the request, and ultimately make a report to you, who would need to, in the end, authorize the issuance of a discontinuance permit. I'd urge not to get too far into discussion on the substance of this, so we can independently let the Mobile Home Rent Control Board do its work, but know that you play a significant role later in the process.
So they, when we refer it out, it's just to get more information so then this board can make a decision?
So I believe they will have hearings and further investigate this request and make a report to you.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, just a quick question, Mr. Chair. Just confirming, two years to give residents the opportunity to...
So there's a, is an intertwined state statute that provides a two-year turnaround time before somebody can be made to leave the property, that's our understanding of how things would play out. That's not to say that there may not be some other negotiated resolution between the owner and the tenants, but that certainly, you know, has not been the case so far. You know, there's a nuance with this, there are a number of units that are actually owned by the owner of the park, so they are not subject to the rent control end of it, but the whole park itself is subject to the discontinuance permit. But the answer to the question, yes, two years.
How many units are there?
I thought there were like 16 units, it's not as many as I thought, I thought it was 16.
16 or 13.
Yeah.
13, sure.
And that's the one on this side, on the right side?
On the gas station.
Yeah, that's correct.
Is it the same owner of the other one in town?
No, different owners, common ownership with the gas station.
The proposal that they've included in the patent is for housing, looking to build anywhere between 74 and 111 units on the property.
Can't wait to talk about that. And that gas station would be out, right?
I would think so.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's a perk. I mean, whoever says that, I mean, we sell cafes, now it's like, you've got a gas station on site, I mean, so.
Cabin motion, please, Mr. Massey.
Mr. Chairman, I move to refer the discontinuance permit application for Perry's Park, 142 Main Street, to the Mobile Home Rent Control Board.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, through you, pleased to report that we have a gift from Amazon, a business here in town, to the North Reading Fire Department in the amount of $30,000. It's a gift that's being given, I believe without restriction, but the department is intending to utilize it to acquire a UTV or off-road vehicle, something that was identified as a need in response to the brush fires last fall. So Chief is here to make sure it gets over the finish line, except, but appreciate your work and your dialogue with Amazon as well.
Thank you, sir.
Can't believe a motion was prepared.
Real question, please, any special reason Amazon donated? It's great, I just, out of the blue, I was just trying to like, oh, Amazon's donating?
Yeah, so Amazon's been a big supporter of the department for many years, has, and has donated in the past, so in speaking to them about a completely different issue, they asked us how we fared during brush fires and if we had any needs. And this was actually something I identified in the department for several years, but it's really never made it to the pleasure process or my capital request because of the other pressing needs. So in seeing this opportunity, I just said, yes, you know, we could actually use a UTV. And they asked if we could get them some, some pricing, some quotes, and I had no idea the amount that they would be supporting us with, but I was pretty pleased to see it.
That's great. Thank you, Chief.
Appreciate that, that's great. Can I have a motion, please, Mr. Massey?
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept funds in the amount of $30,000 for the fire department gift account.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Gonzalez, any further discussion?
Just, again, to further acknowledge the generosity of Amazon, and they have been generous in the past, and a couple other departments, too, and they're being good neighbors, and appreciative of the support that they get from our community services, and it's nice them to be giving back, so I appreciate it.
Any others? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, appreciate that. Chief, thank you.
Thank you.
We have to go and arrive, and then you've got... We have to go and arrive and then you've got.
Have to check out our insurance policy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, through you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Nick.
Normally this would be a routine item with regard to our fiscal year 2026 health insurance plan. The board's vote to approve the plan for the upcoming year. But I'll share with the community something that we've been working with our employees and their collective bargaining representation on, which is a transition in our health plan that is a significant opportunity to address financial challenges that we have identified for fiscal year 2026. We have, for I believe the past seven years, been providing a plan through Blue Cross Blue Shield of Massachusetts. We have gone to the market nearly every one of those years to solicit proposals and have had less than advantageous responses that have come into the town, and we have jointly agreed with our employees to stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield. This particular year, Mass General Brigham Health Plan, which is a plan that is not limited to the Mass General Network and in fact has a pretty extensive coverage in Massachusetts and also in the areas immediately abutting over the state line, came in with a very aggressive proposal that results in a significant savings in the budget for the upcoming fiscal year, something that will have a real impact on both the municipal and school budgets. It allows us to continue the same plan design that we have had with the same deductible and coverage levels, but at a significantly less premium increase than what we were looking at from Blue Cross, which was about a fifteen and a half percent premium increase compared to about a five percent premium increase when you factor in the participating funding arrangement that we have been using during that seven-year term. It's a significant opportunity for us. We've had very productive discussions on multiple occasions with our insurance advisory committee and advising that we would be bringing this forward for the board's approval. For fiscal year 2026, that's the year beginning July first, 2025. To be clear, this is for mostly active employees and for retirees who are under age sixty-five. For our retirees who are sixty-five or older, they would qualify for Medicare plan, which would not renew until January first. Blue Cross Blue Shield has indicated that we'll keep that plan in effect through December thirty-first, and we'll see what happens with regard to the year after that. Beginning January, see what proposals come in, including, you know, potentially from Blue Cross Blue Shield or from Mass General Brigham. And we'll evaluate that at that point in time. Just to speak to the numbers, moving forward with this scenario coupled with it projected increase in new growth that we discussed in the last meeting, our projected deficit for municipal departments goes from seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars to five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. And then for the school department, from one million, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, twenty-three dollars to eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And I believe most of what I've described has been reflected in the past ten days or so of budget discussions by both the Select Board and the School Committee, but can't underscore how important this transition is for stabilizing things, at least for this current fiscal year, and knowing that we do have the advantage of the PFA and the surplus in the PFA, looking to, you know, potentially control premium increases in future fiscal years. I provided a motion for approval for the board to consider. We would ask for, for approval.
Mr. Massey?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the attached health insurance plan for fiscal year 2026.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Waller. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just think it's, the town administrators have done a good job of outlining, you know, what's occurred, but it, it is critical that this is part of our fiscal plan moving forward and certainly appreciate the short notice. That's the other thing with this whole process, is that we have had a very short window of opportunity to, to evaluate and communicate with our employees. And everybody's jumped in both feet and put in the requisite amount of time to better understand what, what's really at stake here and what's, what's going to be happening. And again, when you change people's health insurance plan, that's a big deal. And the employees, again, were very inquisitive and concerned, as they should be. And I think those concerns have been allayed, and I think the proposal that's put forth is in everybody's best interest, particularly when it comes to the fiscal constraints that we're under right now. And I just want to acknowledge again, the administrations and administrator and his team, doing the school superintendent and his team, human resources, our consultants, Tony, who this board sent back to the marketplace and look at it again. We were looking at a sixteen percent increase, and everybody's done a fantastic job. And again, Mass General Brigham, very reputable, reputable, and again, came to the table looking for our business. So it's, it's a win-win for everybody at this point.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Mr. Chairman, through you, I think next up is to review the recommendations of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. There was a ninety-nine percent accurate version of the plan that was put into the package on Friday evening. What you may see on the screen is maybe slightly outdated, and we'll talk about that. The Chair, Mr. Keller, is here this evening to, as he annually does, review what is being recommended to the Select Board. And I will share up on the screen the document. I'll start with the summary page that shows the requests and, you know, being proposed, if you want done. But I'll turn it over to you as I go through that.
Thank you. In addition to the two, two schedules that are in your package, there should also be a memo from the committee just outlining the process we went through, what we received in, in requests of this year. We received over ten million dollars in requests. Big, big numbers. We ultimately, after consultation with the department heads and a lot of discussion with them and them educating us on what they were looking for and why, and a lot of internal discussions among the committee. We've had many meetings over the last four or five months, just going through this stuff, talking it through, and making sure that we understand, understood it and understood the priorities. So of the, the, there was a total of the ten-plus million dollars, we were recommending four point one seven seven million. The number there shows five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. More than that, that's the, the five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that we're going to be receiving from the state under Chapter Ninety. So we threw that into the, the roads number, but when we, when you guys come to vote for this, the vote won't include the Chapter Ninety, but it's there so for completeness. If we can go up to the top of that line.
I'm sorry, real quick.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, real quick.
There you go.
Please, Mr. Massey.
Is the form, so your four million number is inclusive of or non-inclusive of?
The four million on here is inclusive of the five hundred and fifteen thousand. The number without that is four million, one hundred and seventeen thousand. So that would be the number you'd be, you'd be voting on, because you don't vote on the, the Chapter Ninety award.
Okay.
We're proposing bonding, just a few items this year. The, the school department has requested phase two of the roof replacement at the, at the hood school. Phase one was done last year where they went and went through the, the roof and made sure that they had all of their, the leaks and issues on, on the roof sealed so that they could go on with the replacement. The five hundred and fifty thousand dollars is, is phase two. Next year, the other four hundred and fifty thousand dollars will be requested. It's a million-dollar project to replace the roof, but it's a twenty-five-year-old roof. It's a very service, serviceable building, and we, we need to, to maintain it. On the DPW engineering, this is the roadway rehabilitation. So the million, six hundred and seventy-three thousand includes the neighborhoods that we, we were scheduled to do, and that's around seven hundred thousand dollars. And then another eight hundred-plus thousand dollars that we've identified and recommended it be done at resurfacing Lowell Road and North Street, from Lowell Road to Main Street. The part that was dug up for the, for water last year, it's in pretty bad, bad shape. There is another piece of this request that you will see when we get down to what we're deferring to next year. And that's a, uh, doing the, doing Concord Street. And Concord Street all by itself is about eight hundred. So it was a million, million six in, in the projects of going over major roads and, and doing what they, what Joe, if you still on, can explain a lot better than I do. A cold-in-place process, and you probably know what that is. And that should bring the roads up to a condition where they're, they're, they're usable and are without a lot of potholes and cracks and, and a lot of the other issues. The fire, the fire department has requested a replacement of, of the ambulance. We did one last year or the year before, I believe. The timeline for getting these built has, has extended. So it's probably, I think, three years before this would be, would be available. So it's got, there has to be a vote authorizing the, the expenditure. It will be fully paid by the ambulance reserve. So that's why there's a column called Other Sources. And as I mentioned earlier, the five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars is another source for, for the road program. You can look at the rest of these. You probably have. Those are the, the big items. But there's, you know, turnout here for the fire department, technology for the school department, and, and the IT department, an expansion of Riverside Cemetery. We're running out of space there and need, need to do something. We haven't done anything in, in terms of capital in, in going into Riverside Cemetery in a, in a number of years. So it's, it's time to do it. Some of us will need it sooner than others. On our list for the past hundred years has been a new bucket truck. We, we inherited a bucket truck from the good graces of, of Redding Municipal Light Department many years ago. It's old. It is questionably sound, and it is a, does not reach to the height we, we needed to reach. So we've been kicking this one around for, for a number of years. We just need, need to do it now. And so that is in, in the request. Some engineering for a handicap ramp on the third meeting house, ten tasers for the, the police department. They are, ones they have are going out of date and out of service. We need to replace them. HVAC for town buildings. This includes all of the town buildings. That's not, they're not all going to get done, but we're creating a pool of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars here. There is another three hundred that was approved a couple of years ago. It's actually just three fifty. There's still three hundred of them. So we're going to try to get as much as we can get done in air conditioning in town buildings. We have tried to set aside some money for sidewalk repair and tree removal on not streets that are being, being worked on and replemated, but streets that just have got cracked sidewalks, uplifting sidewalks, that the roots of the trees have done something to. We've put more than this in past years. We scaled it back this year only because it, it is so tight. But twenty-five thousand dollars would, would continue the program, but at a, a lesser, lesser rate. The, the DPW engineering, this is a contingency for the roads that are being done if they need to do anything on drain repairs and flood mitigation. Not sure it's going to happen, but if it does, we need it there. We intend to fund this out of an additional Chapter Ninety award that we believe we'll be getting this fall sometime. It isn't cast in stone. I think it's got to come through the, the budget process in the state. But the indications we've gotten is that it will be, it will be made available to us. And if we need it, it's there. If we don't need it, then we won't use it. Some vehicles, a pickup truck for the, for the highway department, replacing the twenty-sixteen Tahoe at the police department. I'm going to skip down the day officer vehicle for the fire department. All, all vehicles that we need to do. Two of them are going to be paid out of the overlay reserve, and the other one will be paid with, with cash. We're going to, going to do an upgrade of the, the town website. There is also a grant application out there. And if we get the grant application, this may not need to be spent, but it's much more early to, to town. And then on the Damon Tavern, there are, there are asphalt shingles in the rear of the building and some slate shingles in the front. The asphalt shingles need some repair to just prevent them from leaking into a, a historic building. And slate shingles, we need to pay close attention. They'd be dangerous if they're not, not taken care of. So what we're looking for here, we've, we've got in those three columns, the first column is the total request, including the, the hundred and, the five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from Chapter Ninety. The second, column N, is free cash that's been made available for, for these projects. And the million, two-ten is what we're planning on bonding. So the three items, the, the school roof, the roads, the roads, and that hundred and sixty part of the DPW HVAC program. And then the final column, these are the amounts that are coming from other sources, including Chapter Ninety, overlay, and ambulance reserve. So that is our proposal for this year. We're down now to talk about what we're, what we're not recommending, and we're not recommending these for a variety of reasons. Having the available funds is certainly a significant part of that. The eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars that I had mentioned earlier, which is the, it is targeted for Concord Street. There could be some discussion whether we do Concord Street and not do North and Lowell, but they're above the same in, in dollars. North and Lowell need to be done together, just a stage of the, the equipment to do the work. It wouldn't make any sense to do North Street and then truck it over to Concord Street. Would make more sense to keep, keep it nearby. The bridge and culvert rehabilitation and replacement, we're, we're not recommending that this year. It's important, and we'll bring it back next year, but it is something we can take a pass on for one year. We didn't always have this. We started a couple of years ago recommending a half million dollars to take care of any issues with, with, small issues with bridges and culverts so that they don't become big issues. Fire department is also looking to replace a twenty-seven Chevy pickup. They, they preferred to get the car that we saw up above. They couldn't get both of them. DPW, the rear entrance to this building, there's a little groovy area. It should be replaced at some time. It's not critical that it get done. The sidewalk replacement at Bowen Parks Street that's around the library, it's a concrete sidewalk. It's, it's lifting up in some places. There may be some patchwork to be done, but it will need to get done. Same with the carpet replacement. This is replacing all the carpet in the, the library. It may be that we can do something lesser than that out of, out of the repairs and maintenance budget to take care of any critical areas that are, I think, behind the circulation desk is, is where it's worst. And then the last item here is the, the hood school modular, you heard replaced, hood and little school. The proposal here is to build an addition on the, on the back of the hood school. The proposal here is to build an addition on the, on the back of the hood school to replace the, the modular schools at the, modular, classrooms at the little school and the modular classrooms at the hood school. Both are aged out, they're, they're, they're in, they would need a lot of work to, to try to get them back up to snout, and it's not even clear you could do it at a reasonable cost. The school department looked at just replacing the modulators in place in, at each of the schools. Keep one at Little, keep one at, keep the other larger modular units at the hood. Total cost for that was 4.1 million dollars. When we, they first looked at doing the addition, which would be about 50% bigger than the space that would be available through the, the modulators, the number came in at 4.3 million. So it was really a relatively insignificant difference in the, the cost to go to a, a permanent building. The modulators have got a, got a life of maybe 15 to 20 years. The building would, would have substantially longer lives than that. We talked with the, with the schools and talked about contingencies and what they had in contingencies and suggested that that get moved up. And they went from the $1,003 to a million, excuse me, from $4,303 to $4,650, just to have a better contingency in there. We think, or they think that's going to be enough. Time will tell in, in this age of tariffs. You've got steel coming in to, to build this, as well as other materials, of course, but there would probably would be some tariffs associated with modulators as well. Don't know. But anyway, this is a reasonable thing to do in, instead of modulators with a cost that is as close as the modular side, you get, you get a permanent building out of this. So those are deferred. I'm not sure when the, the Little and the, the hood school is going to come up. I know that, that you folks approved a, an application for MSBA reimbursement at your last meeting. Hopefully, we, we get that and get a, a good chunk of this covered by MSBA. As an aside, they would not cover anything for modular buildings. So, you know, if we get them to do what they did on the high school, we'd be in, be in a lot better shape with this, both financially and from a, a facilities point of view. So that is what we've recommended. Other questions on this list?
Yeah.
So I'm going to go to the other board members, maybe Mr. Larry.
We've been through this for months.
Yeah. Please. Okay. Ms. Gonzalez?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Keller. I have a question about the trees. So we talk about this, you know, year after year.
The trees?
The trees.
Yeah.
That were put into these new neighborhoods that were built and they cracked.
Recording in progress.
Through the sidewalks.
Yeah.
Are we on top of that now? I guess probably a CPC question right now.
Is it all done? I, I would defer to the TA, but I, we've made progress on it.
No, I mean, like, going forward. Are we not allowing those trees to be planted like that anymore?
Yes, yes, they have, they plant them on the, the strip between the sidewalk and the street.
Because subsequently, it ends up costing us a lot of money.
The planning commission changed their policy, which is good.
Yeah. Okay, great. I just didn't know if it happened. Can we go back to...
We seem to have a hiccup here.
The roadway rehabilitation and reconstruction that you're not, that you're deferring? I missed that. Can you repeat that one?
Concord Street?
The one you're deferring?
That's Concord Street.
Mr. repeating the Concord Street.
Oh, I thought you said north.
We're deferring Concord Street. Those projects that, the, the request from DPW is for about $1,006 to do Concord Street, North Street, and Lowell Road. Okay? Three heavily traveled, two heavily traveled roads and one that is just a mess because of what we did in digging it up for, for water. When we, when we put this together, we knew there just weren't enough funds to
Right.
Do that level of, of, of roadwork and still get anything else done. So it was a trade-off.
So which ones are, are we doing?
We're doing, we're recommending doing North and Lowell. And their, the price of North and Lowell is about, combined is about the same as the price for Concord Street. They're both 800-ish thousand dollars.
And north?
Along with, along with neighborhoods.
And north and central?
We also, also doing neighborhoods, yes.
Is north and central done?
No, no, it's north and from the building. It's from Main Street to Lowell.
Are you talking about this?
Yes.
Yes.
Right here, down to Lowell Road, down to 62.
I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about north and 62.
Oh, no, no, no.
All right.
No, it's, it's.
I was in the wrong place. Okay. So you're talking about the road that runs right here?
Right in front of us.
And that you're deferring or that you're...
No, that we're doing. What's being deferred is the 811-555 for Concord Street.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. That's what we're recommending.
Yeah.
You guys decide.
Thank you.
Mr. Waller?
Just the HVAC?
Yeah.
Are we talking like these units? Is that what we're talking about?
There'll be, there'll be...
And which, which buildings do we know?
Heat pumps will be used. Yeah, they're just, be similar to those.
Okay.
And we need some at the, the police station. We need some at the library. We need some maybe at the, the, the building on the common. We need some in this building. Now, we're not going to be able to get all of that done this year, but
But you're making a...
The ones that are the worst will be attended to, the ones that can be repaired will be repaired to the extent we can do it. We'll be back with this again next year. This, this is not going away in, in one year.
Good.
Mr. Jim?
Thank you.
Just to further clarify, in the past, these projects have come through sort of earmarked building by building for smaller projects, and what we're finding through facilities is that it will make more sense to have them available for any of the municipal buildings so that we can respond more quickly when issues come up. To be clear, we will be looking at all of the buildings. The $160,000 that's identified as bonding was specifically identified initially for the memorial library due to the failed air conditioning system in that building in the basement and first floor. That is unlikely to be a heat pump situation due to the age of the infrastructure in the building. It's got a ventilation system. We're being advised to both maintain the existing boiler system and to replace in kind with an air conditioning-only set, system for the ventilation duct work that's in there. We are also though going to go out to bid for proposal to go to the newer heat pump technology. We're not optimistic that we're going to get advantageous bids, but we were asked to do so by the committee, so we'll be doing that in the month of May as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Beauza. Thank you.
I want to just go to things, gee. Capital, this list in general, is there an opportunity where we can have more detail?
Same with the...
This, this list in general, is there an opportunity where we can have more detail?
Sure. There is a write-up from each department on which, which the committee looked at, and we, we discussed it and talked to the department heads about it. There's, there's, there's a fair amount of detail. Each, each of the departments did a presentation to us.
Understood, but I'm just thinking, if, if you're going to present to the select board to make decision going on it, it'd be nice to have a scope of work just to understand. You know, I, I didn't see any of the list of streets. I didn't see any of the town buildings for HVAC listed. It's very hard to understand what your plan is with this request for funding.
I think Mr. Gilberto just addressed the town, the town buildings for HVAC. It's going to be taking care of the worst, and it may be a number of buildings.
We don't know the worst, is what I'm asking?
The library's the worst.
Well, we, we know that we, ideally, we would like to replace everything, but we don't have the funds to do that. So we're going to take care of the ones that need it the most and those, the ones that can't be repaired. I don't know which ones they have at this point.
And do you understand these streets? Do you have a list of the neighborhoods that we?
Yeah, there is, there is, I'll go through that with you, sure. There is a program that was put in place a number of years ago for neighborhoods, and we've been going through those neighborhoods, doing the streets. We've been doing this for, I don't know, six years maybe, at least. And so there is a complete list of, and we're running, we've only got two neighborhoods left in that original group of, of neighborhoods. DPW, excuse me, is putting together a new one. We've had a survey done of the streets, the condition of the streets, and DPW is putting together another list. We don't control which streets are being done, we're not the experts in streets. DPW is, so we, we will tell them how much money they can, they can use, but then they've got to fit it into a budget, and they will pick the neighborhoods, and they did that, and it's, as I say, it's worked successfully for about a half dozen years. I think it may have been one year where we, we just had to take a, a, a pass on doing any because of very tight budgets, but we got right back on it immediately. This year's roads, you still on the, the line there, Joe?
I don't believe you are. Let me see what I got here. I know, Mr. Keller, something I asked before to the administration was a five-year plan, which it sounds like that's a creation, which is great, but
There is a five...
You're playing to map out.
Which department gives us a five-year plan?
I'm, I'm strictly talking streets.
Yes.
And paving.
Yes.
That was not available at the time I requested.
I don't know who, who did you request it from? You didn't request it immediately.
No, he's, I think he's asking for the plan that's not, not finished being completed yet. He's on the pavement management plan.
Yeah, it's not.
There are, there are two targets.
Correct, I understand. I understand it's in, which is great.
There are two more neighborhoods in, under the old plan that still have to be done, so that's going to be two years.
I'm not arguing with you. All I'm asking is that if you could list those streets, it's presented to the public. Some people might see their streets and say, oh, this is great. I don't see the issue with that.
You got it? You make any better?
I'll try to see if I can improve the view on that. By Kenzo. Okay, Mark. Look at that.
I'm thinking of the worst.
So you can see on the right-hand side, the 2026 group, six and seven streets, those are the sixth and seventh group being based upon our last pavement management plan update. It's the Turner Drive area off Elm Street. The 2027 area, little, in the vicinity of the little school, we've had some known issues in that neighborhood, so they are identified in there for the 2027 construction year. And then you see 2028, we have down the bottom there, Aspen Road, North Street, Deer Run, Red Hill, Marblehead, and Deerville Place. So that's what we were seeing in terms of a projection based upon that, what was initially a five, but will end up taking us, it seems like, seven or eight-year plan. The one thing I just want to clarify is it is subject to review each year with what we're finding for conditions in the field. We have an updated pavement management plan that we're still going through that, that may alter this, but that's sort of what we're looking at for action.
This is great, thank you. You're welcome.
And in addition, any water main breaks, water work that's done?
Surprises.
That, that kind of messes up the plans at times, too.
Yeah. A few more questions, Mr. Chair, I apologize.
No, no.
Ambulance, ambulance, that's great. The only thing I was shocked at was 2020, so those, those vehicles do kind of have short life expectancy, huh?
Ambulance is a five-year life, and then it goes down to be the backup ambulance. So it's got a 10-year life, but only five is the frontline piece of it.
Sidewalks, 25K. I'm not sure exactly what that's going to buy us.
It's not going to buy us a whole lot. It is, it's not 20, it's, it's repairing, as, as Mrs. Gonzalez that was asking, sidewalks that trees were planted in the space between the sidewalk and the street and have grown, and the roots have taken up to sidewalk. These aren't streets that are being, being reclaimed or, or any, any work done on them. These are just sidewalks and that need to get done. Ideally, we would have $75,000. We didn't have it. We've kind of, we've been doing that for a number of years. We cut it back to 25,000 this year as a way of getting as much done as we could.
Okay. Understood. Yeah, but, and I think there's a lot of those, too, which is maybe we keep chipping away at it or...
Well, that's, that's what we've been doing.
Especially around schools and stuff like that.
Well, wherever it is, people walk, walk their, their children, their children drive their bikes, so it's not just around the school.
No, I'm with her. I think more. Pickup truck for DPW, is that replacing one of the brown ones around, around town?
It is replacing...
An F-250? I mean, just...
2008.
So that would be one of the trucks.
2008, it's one of the brown ones.
Could be a round truck, yeah.
That's good.
There may be a shifting that occurs, so it'll ultimately be one of the older trucks that will be disposed of.
Understood. Town website overhaul, is that going to be contracted out?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. Yes, that's something that would be contracted out. We have Civic Plus, who's, they maintain our current site. They are kind of a benchmark for municipal sites, but our site is multiple generations behind the current at this point. To be clear, we, we have a grant application that has been awarded for the digitization of records. Part of that is an upgrade to the town website, but that is contingent upon our status with regard to MBTA communities, so we're sort of safeguarding against anything that might happen in that process with this $50,000. That project needs to be completed by October of 2026, but we don't intend to start the project because we don't want to get into a situation where we're not paying, not paying money back. But we will be able to start the website because we have funding available soon.
That's great. I'm happy to see Riverside Cemetery, I agree with you, that's, that's nice to get on there. The Damon Tavern roof. So didn't we just approve about $2 million for that roof? Wasn't it, wasn't it doing?
Damon Tavern?
Or maybe it wasn't $2 million, was it something?
No, it was $25,000 for the Putnap House, which is right next door.
For the Putnap House, okay. And this is a shingle roof and slate roof?
Shingle in the back, slate in the front.
Shingle in the back, slate in the front for aesthetics purposes and historical preservation purposes.
I'm thinking, my fault, I'm thinking that.
Yeah, yeah, it's Putnap House next door.
The addition at the hood. The superintendent just sent me an email of 4.5. This is 4.65. Not that I want to get into it, I think, do you know how many, how much square foot that we are looking, because you mentioned
Yeah.
This is potentially 50 times bigger than, or 50% times bigger
50% times.
Than the modulators.
And the number has been, I'm not sure where you get the 4.5, the number's been 4.65 for some time.
Is because of the information I get?
As recently as this morning. So the, the, the purpose of this addendum for town's intent is to consider an expanded auction, which is what we're talking about, at the J.T. Cherno Wood, increasing square footage of the new permanent building by 50% existing floor area from 5,000 to 7,500 square feet. So that's the size of it.
Okay. And that 4.5 million, so that is paying for inclusive of architect and OPM fees, or is this just a rough construction cost?
I believe this is the, the 4.65 is the total cost including the soft cost.
Okay.
You know, so who is taking down the old corner posts and the schools?
Yes.
And that's included in this price.
What's the source of that number?
Superintendent.
They've gone out and bought, bought in bids before award bids or, is that true? No, that was the, uh-
There was an analysis, there was an analysis conducted.
Yeah.
They're going to use it all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was funded at last year's town meeting and they had a party committee and helped do, uh, provide that. Um, I'm not sure I have the study itself, but I'm sure we can get that study, too.
A third-party cost estimate?
Uh, I believe that there was a, a third-party that was evaluating the condition of the roof. And I think either they or somebody else cost estimated it, but we, we didn't separately cost estimate it, as far as I know.
Well, this isn't the roof, this is the addition.
So, not the roof, I'm sorry, for the, the addition. Uh, but we can get you that report.
Yeah. I, I think we're so far under. I think we're really under.
Under what?
Because if we're going to the MSBA, you're going to be an OPM and an architect. And that, and, and we have our school committee member here, too. Maybe he can speak with it, if our chair would allow. But you need to go get an OPM and architect.
I'm worried.
And then you got to construct it. And you're saying all in 4.625.
That is what, that's my belief.
I think you're at 7.5 million without the OPM and architect, without soft cost.
Um, I, maybe you want to look at, at what we've bought in-
That's 2023 pricing at $1,000 a square foot.
Again, this is deferred, correct, Mr. Keller?
This is deferred.
Yes. It's all-
We're not, we're not-
So I think the good news is a, if there's a discrepancy between what Mr. Massey feels based on what he does and the numbers we have, at least the good thing is, it's not like we're going on it like right now, for like this year's. Correct? So like, we'll probably have to hammer down the number a little bit more. And then, Mr.-
I mean, it's $4.5 million, and you want to still try and figure out, hand me down the number?
Yeah, but this is for next year when I'm doing it right now.
The proposal is not on the table.
Yeah. It's not on the table. This is deferred for next year.
This is, this was what was proposed for the capital improvement planning committee. It's been deferred. Um, we sent the letter to the MSBA. As far as potential reimbursement, we recognize that if there's going to be reimbursements from the MSBA, there are going to be additional requirements which require additional costs. But again, they, hopefully the reimbursement that comes through more than covers those costs. And still believe that this, this figure is legitimate as recently as this morning. But that being said, we're not going to be proposing, there's no proposal to come forward at this particular time on it.
The issue, and I do think that this is way underestimated, is that-
Well, I think you go back.
But the ultimate thing I want to note is that when you're asking the MSBA to fund a portion of your building, if pre-K is involved, the MSBA does not fund the pre-K programs. Therefore, everything that has to do with the square footage of a building, right? So that would say, a building, this portion is pre-K. All the materials, including the architect and the OPM fees are prorated. Everything is taken away from that reimbursement. They don't fund anything that has to do with a pre-K program. Typically, and that's why I think last meeting I came off a little stronger, and the reason is is because I'm passionate about it. I understand the process of the MSBA. The issue is that you're asking to go into the core program for an addition. Not often does the MSBA, typically it takes about 10 years to get back into the program. Eight, sometimes, unless you're, you know, a Somerville or a Cambridge or Warren's or a- So I don't like to ask, i- it's, it's unfortunate, if the board wants to move forward, it is what it is, but it, or the people of the town. Um, but asking it to go into the core program of the MSBA, I don't want us to waste our ask.
Okay.
And especially when you're using this program and this idea to include pre-K, which is basically taking a big portion of that building to be non-reversible by the MSBA. And so I want to point out this number of 4.625. And whether I'm on the board when it comes back or not, or I'm off the board, doesn't matter. I'm going to say that I told you that it was-
Well, it's fine. Well, if, if you're, if you're right, you're right, and we'll, we'll have to find another way of doing it or find different funding. I don't know, but let it play out, as, as, as Mr. Olery said. This is not a proposal now. This is a heads-up. That's all it is. And if you think it is going to be-
Well, the wheels are in motion.
If you think it's going to be $7 million, let it play out in the, what the school department is doing. Find out.
Mr. Keller, I care for what we tell the people that it's going to cost, and then we come back later. So that's me-
This is the best information we have at the moment.
Understood.
On feasibility study.
Would have been great to have a discussion. The school committee could have came here and, and spoke to us about it. There's, there's a communication that in my opinion, I think, can better happen. This is a major project. And I think the school committee or the superintendent could have had the opportunity to talk these things through so we can explain to say, hey, if this is the idea, you may want to pivot this way. So anyways. Yes, sir. The hood roof. Can we go to that number?
Yes.
Go, go back and go.
Up to the hood roof. $550,000. Wanted. Was there a capital improvement we approved within the last couple of years as to do with the hood school?
Yeah, $200,000 in fiscal '25. There was a, 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 uh-
Through face.
A, a capital fund for doing, examining the roof, making sure all the patches were done that, that, that needed to be done. And that was completed in, uh, 2025. It was $200,000.
So it was completed-
It's completed in October of '24.
So that's my fault. So someone explain that to me. So we, $200,000, that was for a study to make sure that we had the-
No, that was, that was to do the repair work on, on the roof to make sure there weren't, to repair any, any leaks that were there.
Okay, so $200,000.
Mr. '25, you were over there.
I understand. So I'm trying to find, so what's the $500,000 for?
To replace another section of the roof. It was done, I believe, three phases is what we're talking about as far as, uh, they did the infrared as far as moisture and damage that was there.
That's pretty cheap.
Pardon me?
That's pretty cheap. I'm just trying to find out what-
Yeah, no, no, so basically three phases. This is another, this is the final phase of the, of the hood school roof to be completed.
Next year will be the final.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
That's incorrect, next two.
So can, can we put in parentheses when this goes to town meeting, phase two of three? And do you understand what area of roof is the biggest? Is it phase two or phase three or phase one?
Phase, phase three is $450,000. So it's a, it's a small area.
$450,000.
Next year.
So I put up on the screen there, I'll try to zoom in on it to see if it helps. Nope, no, that didn't work.
Mr. Gilberto, did we receive this?
Uh, no, this is a presentation from the school committee to the capital improvement planning committee, but happy to share it with the folks, um, now or electronically afterwards. So our understanding is, oh, just reading from the notes, so you see that the roof dates to 2001. Excuse me. Several leaks that have been, um, that required costly repair and maintenance. Phase one was, uh, completed over, um, the, uh, I believe the summer of last year and into the fall. The school committee is out to bid right now in advance of a hopeful appropriation to do phase two this summer, as we understand. I think that's what the superintendent told us this morning. Um, the first phase, uh, of the, first of the two remaining phases would be the roof areas that are marked A, B, C, D, and E, which I believe are highlighted in blue on there. That kind of like blue area on the main portion of the building. And then roof areas, uh, F, G, and H would be addressed. And they don't show up there, I'll try to point to them.
No, that's all.
But there's a portion that's on there, and there's a portion that's modular that we're not doing it. Obviously.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, if I, if we can have that.
Sure.
Absolutely. Any chance to replace the carpet in the hallways of town hall?
That would be, that would not be a capital rep, uh, uh, project unless we were doing a very large area. Um, the repairs and maintenance budget, we, there is a, there is an article every year for $50,000 for repairs and maintenance on municipal buildings. That could be used, I don't, I'm not sure what they're scheduling this year, but doing the hallways could be part of that, but I'm not speaking for DPW here. There are funds that are available for-
It's a separate article that we appropriate every year, and it's on the list.
Mr. Gilberto. Mr. Chairman, through you, so it has been indicated, there's a couple of articles that have been funded over the past two or three years. I believe they totaled $100,000 for town building repairs. Um, the facilities superintendent is looking at the hallway carpets as, uh, one of the potential projects to be addressed. Um, a secondary one is, again, some other HVAC issues that probably wouldn't fit in that, in that area. But that is an area that's on the list to be done. We have done a number of carpets, including carpet in this room and some of the offices that have been, I say renovated, it's mostly asbestos remediation and painting that we do to them. Um, so there are offices that have had that done. You know, carpet's been replaced or, or removed or replaced with our, our style flooring, not hardwood, but a, a synthetic material. Uh, but I know that Todd is looking at the carpets because they're in need of-
Oh, yeah.
In all hallways. I know, we all know, we walk down every day.
And the last one was, um, I wanted to set aside some, set aside some efforts for some senior center improvements on the exterior of the building. Would that be?
There's a ton of the, the, how do you do it? What you do is to-
Like what? No, I, I understand, no, the, the building itself for sure. I'm thinking the grounds.
Grounds?
The grounds.
Grass gardens?
Grass, bushes, low maintenance bushes, flowers.
Well, one of the things is that the downtown sewer is going to go right past there. All right, so if, if you wanted to start planning, letting over somewhere, you need to make absolutely sure it's not going to be dug up from the downtown sewer. And that's the project we were called. It takes-
It won't take too long to find that out.
Really?
To find out where the sewer's going, to rub the sewer-
No, but you, we can, it's not just finding out what, what they say they're getting, it's what happens if there's any changes or some slight adjustment one way or the other. So it is going to go up through the media.
I'm talking cheap money on our own forces. We can get it done, make it a little nice, put some mulch, put some flowers, so that my folks show up there proud.
And we do-
But hold on, hold on.
Can I have a quick question? Is that, that's not capital.
It is not capital.
It's not capital.
DPW operating? What is it? Do you know?
No, that's going to work.
If it wasn't, what is it?
I, I, I know it's not capital just because of the, but-
So it depends upon the extent of what we're doing for work. I think from my previous conversation with Mr. Massey, he's talking about something that would not be a capital improvement, would probably be operating. And I know that there are some smaller projects that have been conducted, um, even more recently based on some of your feedback on the exterior. Landscaping, though, to be clear, is not something that we do a ton of, other than cutting grass. Um, I think if the operations manager were here, he would say that's not necessarily their, um, proverbial wheelhouse. But I, I know that the DPW director is trying to the extent that we can, um, make some improvements at, at the facility. We've already made a number of improvements inside, but looking to make some outside as well. Uh, it could be a capital project, could be a significant, you know, landscaping initiative. Um, probably would certainly trigger the $25,000 threshold based upon the needs. Uh, but we don't have a capital project that's been, um, planned for the exterior, at least at this point in time. And I think part of that is tied to the facility's master plan and what we know are other improvements that are needed up there that would be well beyond the site.
Mr.- Yeah, we have $4.6 million, I'm talking $20,000 of upgrades, but anyways, another one I wanted to speak about was street signage. So something I've also been talking about, a lot of the street signage in town is-
Not capital. Bring it up, it's not, it's not, nothing would come before that.
Well, let me, let me give you this, is we're having trouble balancing the operating budget. Why can't, I ask, to see if this board would like to put it in capital?
If we're done with capital, I don't care what you do.
Well, no, we're on capital.
But this is not capital, so he's saying he just, we just have to-
Can I just jump in, please?
Ms. Gonzalez?
I think sometimes we make assumptions that everybody understands what certain committees do and, um, you know, sometimes we don't. So even for the public who's listening, um, can we just do like a simplified general, either Mr. Gilberto or Mr. Keller, of this committee, how it's made up, who's made up on it, and what actually happens, so that everybody understands what this is about?
Can I take a second?
First of all, the capital project is defined as something, $25,000 a board that's got a life of, of, of at least five years, okay? The committee is made up of two members of the select board, currently it's Mr. Suno and Ms. Rowley.
Essentially the chair and the vice chair.
Pardon?
Chair and the vice chair.
Chair and the vice chair. I'm the chair. And, uh-
No, I mean on the-
Laurianne is the chair and vice chair of the, of the, the select board. It is, it also includes the, um, assistant principal, assistant superintendent of the, the, uh, school committee, um, and a school committee member. It includes, uh, the town administrator and the finance director. It includes two members of the finance committee, Mrs. Hollett and me, and it includes one member in the community, and that's Joe Foote. That is the committee. And the committee will change every year for appointments by this body and the school committee. It will change the, the people who are representing the, the most important bodies. Uh, we typically have not, we have not, not typically, we have not had a change in the representatives from the finance committee or from municipal government or from the, the assistant superintendent. The school committee person does change.
So the select board?
Yeah.
And I think most people on this, appear have served at one time.
Can I add a little bit more of that? There was a question about the membership, I'm sorry. No, I was just going to say, if, if select board members, are you able to change how you allocate the money since we're being asked to approve the capital improvement budget? Will you be able to? If we like something, will we be able to move one? That's a simple way to ask.
So if-
Or some, Mr. Gilberto-
So we make a recommendation to the select board. The select board will decide what is going on in the warrant.
Understood. And this is one of those that are being requested to on the warrant. I'm asking if the select board can say, thank you for your recommendation, 95% of whom are great. We'd like this one, we got us. That's what I'm-
This is a recommendation to the select board. The select board is the, the deciding body for the warrant.
Understood, and I understand that. That's why I'm going to go all the way back to the street signs. Ready? Over $25,000 and lasts more than five years. Why wouldn't that be capital improvement?
Mr. Gilberto? I, I guess my, my question would be, if we're talking about a replacement of every street sign in town, that probably is going to trigger a capital project, yes. Um, if we're talking about signs that are in need of replacement in certain areas or identified areas or even identified neighborhoods, depending upon the cost, that might not be a capital project. Um, so I guess I, I would need to know a little more about what we're talking about when we say street signs.
Could we just-
I don't know, I'm trying to be helpful, yeah.
Can we continue with the explanation of what happens on the committee, like how things are presented, and then how everybody gets a list and votes of what? It's unanimous?
That's exactly what was happening right now.
And it gets voted on, on what you think is a priority, and those get numbered? It's a, it's quite an excellent process, I think?
I understand, but Mrs. Gonzalez, back to the original question, is then it gets presented to the select board, and the select board is able to say, if we like something enough, hey, we're going to maybe cross this out, and we're going to move it over here. I'm not asking to do that today, but I'm just kind of dropping the-
No, no, we can, Mr. Massey, because we had, we did that actually.
I'm trying to understand, guys, remember, this is my first time.
No, that's what I want, I want to-
And we actually did that, no.
But I thought I understood correctly, and I-
And we did do it a couple of years ago, when we lined them out, the whole streetlight thing went central and. Whatever the road that goes like this, it's hard, that I live on. Sorry, so, so yes, no, Mr. Massey, correct, we can. If we identify something, the board can, strike it is a bad word, but that's actually what you're doing, right? If you're moving around, but.
You can do whatever you want with it, it's a recommendation to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, okay.
I think, Mr. Massey, I don't know if you know, Mr. Massey or not, but the departments put out a list of their capital requests around Thanksgiving time, and that gets vetted by the TA and Laurieann and forwarded to the capital committee, and then you start reading and evaluating, talking to the budget.
Can you raise your hand again? I'd love a copy of it, that's all. Yeah, I'd love a copy of it, I think keeping the board involvement in the initial process as early as possible was helpful to have us understand some recommendations to give.
Just a clarification, we do not screen the projects. You know, we generally, they go straight to the committee, and that's a sore spot for me, to be candid with you, because this process was created prior to my being involved, and I respected it, and I think it's worked really well, but I think if you look at some of the charter provisions, it's not consistent with what the town charter says should happen capital, which is pre-proposition two and a half language anyway, so it's a bit outdated. But my point bringing up is, we don't screen the projects first, and, you know, secondly, I did put a copy of what was requested, so all of the requests, it's in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six year file folder. I think what you're asking was, could that be provided earlier in the process rather than, you know, in advance of the report being made? I think that could easily be done, even though it hasn't in the past, I think it makes sense based on what they're asking, and the questions that have been asked. So the only thing I'll just add is, it's not a limitless bucket, we, and I think Mr. Keller was going to get to that, so I'm kind of still his thunder, we strive to keep the debt service within a cap, so we're sort of working within a one point, it's not a one point three, one point three five million dollar debt service number, within the limits of proposition two and a half. So when you see something like a four point five or four point six five million dollar school modular replacement project, that is far outside anything we can do with that amount of debt service, so it would need to be funded separately, and so we're not making a recommendation. What you're seeing here fits, A, within the debt service allocation we talked about, which is not much for borrowing, as you saw, there were only two projects, I think, that identified bonding. And then a significant utilization of free cash, and we've talked a lot about the limits of what we can do with free cash and trying to fund our budget each year with it. They're really, really limited and not advised to be funding annual operating costs, but what this year's plan did, as you saw, is it relies on two million dollars in free cash, which we do not necessarily think will be available in a year from now, based upon the financial constraints that are here, but are comfortable recommending, because we're able to put a dent in our capital needs by using that funding. So I do want folks to know, it's not limitless, we're working to prioritize by rating and to fit a plan within a budget. In this case, we fit within the bonding budget, but we need to rely significantly on free cash with, I believe it's for the financial planning team as well, here.
And just to finish the process that you said, Mrs. Gonzalez, when we've gone through it and spent weeks and months going through each of these, then each of the committee members ranks the projects from the most important or the most necessary to the least.
I think that's great.
And, I'll finish?
Okay.
You want? And then we compile all of those rankings, get an average of them, and then we've got a rank order list of the projects that the entire committee has ranked and found to be from top to bottom. We then go into a process of reviewing that, discussing it, find out where the outliers are that are even higher than the rest of the group, or lower than the rest of the group, just to either educate the lower or higher, or to learn from them of something that we're not aware of that needs to be considered. So this is an iterative process that goes on for quite a while. Then we take the projects that are in the order that we finally decided on, and look at what funding sources we have, whether it's free cash or debt bonding, and what debt service we can generate out over the life of those projects. Put that together and see where we are, whittle it back down, because inevitably, we've got more projects than we can afford to do. And then that's what you saw here today, we had two million dollars in free cash, and we're only bonding a million and two. Those numbers have been different in different years, but the bonding is really, really tight right now. The debt service has been coming out of free cash for the last several years. We all know that free cash is a scarce commodity, so we're holding, we used to, we've got a stabilization reserve as well, we've built over the years. And we would offset any, if we went over the limit, we would take money out of the stabilization reserve, or recommend taking money out of the stabilization reserve, town meeting just to quote that, and to do the projects that we are recommending, and cover it with taking funds out of the stabilization reserve. There is a limit to the amount of money that's going to be available, A, for debt service, the three and a half, the one point three five million dollars, which is our limit, and there's also going to be a limit on the amount of free cash that is available for what we showed in the cash column. I don't expect it's going to be two million dollars last year. So we're going to, we're going to have a tough time coming up with a sizable capital budget for some time.
Don't worry, we're gonna get two million dollars from Mill Street.
Does that help? It helps me. I think I understood it, Mr. Keller, I'm sorry that it came off, that I wasn't insulting the process or anything, I'm just looking forty feet up high.
That's fine, that's fine.
You ask the select board to approve it, do we have the option to move it if we like? And the answer I got is a yes. So that just helps me moving forward for the next couple of years that I'm select board member. Pretty easy, just figuring it out. Thank you.
I will take a motion, then we'll do further discussion, and, yeah, Mr. Massey, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six as submitted by the capital improvement planning committee. Please forward said plan to town meeting.
Second?
Motion, Mr. Massey, second amendment, Gonzalez, any further discussion?
I just want to thank you for all your hard work, I know this is, we've gone through this six years now, and I know you spend a lot of time doing what you do, and it's thoughtful, and it's always appropriate, and it's, you know, I thank you very much for doing the work you do.
It's the entire committee.
What's that? I'm extending that to your entire committee, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Your salary is very low, Mr. Keller.
Salary is very low. The hourly rate is only a lot less here.
Mr. Massey, go ahead. Do you mind, Dawn, next year, if you could be just a little bit more descriptive on these before presenting, just so we understand?
If I'm here.
Okay, thanks.
I would suggest, may I suggest, may I suggest, is that the meetings are always open, you can always go to them early, and you're.
Yeah, I work.
What's that one there?
I'd love to join them, trust me, I know that they're every Thursday eight AM, but I work and I can't make that commitment, I don't know what to tell you.
Well.
But you're asking a board to bring ten million dollars?
Can I speak, please?
We can at least ask questions, poke holes in it.
Can I, do you speak?
Of course.
Okay, so you have a conduit through the chair and the vice chair to be able to learn what's going on, so even if you can't be there, you can always ask what's going on and look at their meeting minutes, and that's what I'm encouraging anybody to do who has some ideas that are, maybe have projects that you want to put on here, bring it forward, and get, you know, get someone to say it, and then see what happens. And that's their job, is to process it, so.
There were good questions, we've done them before, and, you know, we had a pretty lengthy discussion last year, and counter and counter motion on the streetlights, so.
And I've asked these questions before, for months, so.
Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Oh, man. It can't be understated, the work that Mr. Keller does, I need to say that on behalf of Laurieann and I, the committee puts a lot of time in, but Mr. Keller has guided our capital investments and our debt planning within that one point three five million dollar number for eleven years now, because they're twelve years.
Voluntarily?
Voluntarily, without one dime of paying, sometimes to the detriment of projects that he might want to see funded, he bites his tongue and goes through that process, and I just, I know you all rely on the professional staff, you know, for things every day, we rely on all of you as volunteers for the guidance that you provide us, but in this case, we rely on hours of hard work in the background by Mr. Keller, including Friday night that he gave up, so I just, I want to say thank you for all your work, and I know I say it every year, but every year becomes more and more important, so thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman through you. We'll move on to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six revenue and expense plan update. I put that on the agenda for purposes of providing the board an update, and the update is that the numbers remain unchanged from where they were at the last meeting on Monday night. We did have a financial planning team meeting on Monday, this morning. It was this morning, seems like it was a long time ago, but it was this morning. Again, no changes there, I will just report that the school committee can, will continue its work, I believe, on April twenty-eighth in budget discussions with regard to the challenges that they are facing with their budget, you know, similar to the work that you all have put in over the past couple of meetings, and will continue this evening with a goal of having final recommendations for town meeting to be approved for the school committee on April twenty-eighth, and for you all on May fifth as part of the warrant that will be mailed to every resident here in town. Any questions on the revenue plan, and if not, I can move right into the recommendations for trying to balance the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget. So I'm gonna share my screen again, the board members do have this document, and I think the public has seen it in one form or another in meetings over the past couple of weeks. Share that, share that. If you don't mind, perhaps just dimming the lights one more time? Thank you. Okay, I'll just take us from the top, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman through you. I'm attempting in this recommendation, and I guess I never asked her the question directly, but I think this represents a joint recommendation from the finance director and I after the multiple meetings that we've had with you and the feedback that you all have provided us along the way, as well as our very difficult discussions with departments, but we do have a recommendation here that would bring the municipal request into balance by making cuts to departments. And I'll just note at the top, because I know it hasn't gotten a lot of discussion because the positions were vacant, but we had multiple years of grant writer position and DPDW project manager position that we were required to cut in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five's budget, we were not able to be funded at town meeting, they were identified as needs, and ultimately the positions failed to be able to be funded in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. In June of twenty-twenty-four, leading up to a town meeting and a discussion of the budget, I had put together at the board's request a listing of, you know, potential, a high level listing of potential cuts that we would be looking at, and impacts that we would be looking at. And while this list doesn't necessarily exactly mirror that, it certainly does provide a lot more detail, and when I reviewed it, it seemed to have a lot of the same themes as to what we would expect. We started this process with a municipal budget deficit of seven hundred twenty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars. We benefited from that additional new growth in the health insurance reform, along with some budget adjustments that occurred as we went through reviewing the budgets after the submission in February, and it did reduce the shortfall to five hundred three thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. This listing, by making cuts to municipal departments, would balance the budget, but through some challenging ways. And while this recommendation would allow us to go forward with the board's stated goal, the necessary objective of continuing to hire full-time firefighter positions, it does so by prioritizing those positions and not funding requests from other departments and making cuts to other departments. And while that does not result in the elimination of any municipal positions in this year's budget, it does result in what will be impactful cuts to departments over the course of the year. I'm not going to go line by line on this, because I think the more important thing to highlight is, first, that at the expense of other departmental funding, we will look to fund at seventy-five percent of the total request, the four additional firefighters that were identified as necessary. So that could take the form of hiring three of those firefighters for the full fiscal year, it could take the form of hiring four of them in September, and we have a bit of a disadvantage in that the civil service list that we thought would be available on April first now will not be available till May first, so we're not going to have the benefit of knowing what's on the list and how we might be able to move forward with hiring. And again, those hires are in addition to the four vacancies that were funded in this year's budget as well, so we have quite a bit of hiring that we're trying to go through, we're trying to balance that process. I've talked multiple times with the finance director, with the chief, with the human resources director, we feel comfortable with this recommendation, that it prioritizes based on the board's feedback, being able to move quickly with hiring, but also allows us to phase in the adjustments in departmental budgets that's going to be necessary to absorb this. There are a number of reductions in departmental expenses and salaries that are going to put more pressure on departmental budgets, it will cause for more scrutiny at the department head level to make sure those budgets make it to the end of the fiscal year. Probably, most notably, they're going to reduce what we have available at the end of the fiscal year, so we talked about how important that two million dollars was in free cash for capital for this year's plan. We remain very concerned about, again, setting aside the American Rescue Plan Act funds that we know are going to go through the free cash process, we remain concerned about this number being decreased in future years and having an impact not only on how much we can do for capital, but in how we are able to subsidize the debt service budget by transferring in funds from free cash each year as well. Some of the other items that I think it's important to identify, we will be, you know, basically cutting requests for town building projects that was in DPDW. We may be able to identify funding for free cash for that, we're still working through that process, but even then, it's something that the department identified ought to be in its operating budget. The economic development committee funding, we've done a variety of different things over the years, and we fought to preserve that even after having to cut it, I think it was two years ago, it was last year, unfortunately, I sit here, you know, we attempt to find other in-kind services or other available avenues, but I feel as though I have no choice but to recommend eliminating the funding for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. We talked about the trash fee, and that's already built into the revenue plan, I think there'll need to be further conversation with regard to the dollar amount and how that might change in our long-term plans later in the spring, but that is something that we're relying upon here. We're working with both the fire and the police chiefs on reductions in their overtime, and while we think that we'll be able to make it through the fiscal year with those reductions, there is certainly the risk of a major event happening, which did happen in the fire, it did happen in the fire department, there's also the risk of, you know, changes and trends of utilization, which could cause for there to be pressure on those budgets, so we're going to have to watch those budgets very closely. Reductions in contracted services for the health department and other departments, we believe will be able to provide services, but if there's a dramatic change in utilization, you know, based upon construction in the community, that could be a significant impact, and it may be a risk of being unbalanced. We're going to need to fund a cruiser utilizing free cash, again, that's a solution for this fiscal year, it's not a guaranteed solution in future fiscal year, we know in order to maintain our capital plan, we need to be looking on average at two cruisers per year. And then the final thing I'll just note, you know, here, again, not going through everything, but. And then the final thing I'll just note, you know, here, again, not going through everything, but we have had a third town meeting, I think, each of the past couple of years. I'm identifying a cut to go back to what we historically funded at two annual town meetings. If we have a third meeting proposed for whatever reason, it will cause a deficit in that department. We need to ask the finance committee for a reserve fund transfer in order to fund it in all likelihood. We're hopeful that won't be the case. Those are the, you know, that's a summary of the impacts and reductions for fiscal year twenty twenty six in the request. In some ways, the thing I feel is also important to put up here is sort of what's left. When you look, we've made our way down that prioritize listing, starting with the zeros, the ones, the twos, and the threes. You get to the fours and the fives, and you're talking about much more extensive impacts. And while those, many of those adjustments, because there were some that were prioritized up, many of them were avoided. Very clearly is going to be significant further reductions in the municipal department budgets in order to, to come into balance in fiscal year twenty twenty seven. So I'll stop there, Mr. Chairman. I did my best to, with working with Loriann, to reflect the feedback we heard from you, the importance of the town's overall financial position, the feedback we heard from, from departments who will face more pressure in fiscal year twenty twenty six to try to deliver the services the community is receiving. There will be times, I can't necessarily foresee all of them, where there will be adverse impacts, where there will be a delay in something happening, or maybe, you know, a delay in us being able to respond, being able to respond. More likely there will be financial pressure at the end of the fiscal year. But these are what Loriann and I feel are the appropriate recommendations to make to you at this point in time.
We'll go on to the board in a second, but I will say that I, I feel that this board and the administration, we telegraphed it pretty well that last year that we've been coming up to some issues if we didn't find more funding, revenue, tax, whatever. And this is where we're at. So I, I just feel that, you know, it, it should, it should not come to surprise, right? We said it, right? There's going to be some belt tightening, but we got to do it. And it just, I just want to mention that on behalf of the board and the administration, because I think, a couple of times you hear like, where did this come from? And it's like, well, I'm kind of talking about it for a while here, but, you know, if we had all the money in the world, everybody always starts their presentations like that. That'd be great. We could do whatever we want, but that's just not the thing. So. I'll go to my board members. I'll start to my left if you have any commentary on this besides.
I'll defer right now since we've been on the financial planning team and we've been through this a few times.
So just clarification, if I can. So just a clarification, right now with the red that we see, you still are unbalanced. You're, you still have more to go. Is that correct?
No, if we were to go forward with what I presented on this slide with the reductions and break that with balance.
Okay, so now we took care of it. And I noticed you took out a thousand for the slot court.
What are we even, it's not giving.
Well, that's for.
You have a small expense account. Oh. And then there's an appropriation for the MMA.
It's split up five ways evenly.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Ms. Gonzalez?
Um, no, I just want to thank everybody for all the hard work they did on this. And it's never easy. It's never easy. No. If we could fund all of that, it would be fantastic, but we just can't. So.
Mr. Massey?
Yes, sir.
Mr. O'Leary?
I mean, there are risks associated with the recommendations that are being made, and those risks are weighed against cutting personnel at this particular point. I mean, if we, um, if we decide to do something else, you get into those fours and fives, and you're talking people, personnel, programming, services. We're fortunate that we're in a situation where a recommendation such as this can be made this evening. And while we know, and anybody who's working in town hall knows, that this is a significant impact, then what the community's going to see, maybe not feel it immediately at this particular juncture in this particular time. But in contrast, if you look at what's happening over the school department side, you're talking bodies, they, you're talking teachers, you're talking paraprofessionals, you're talking, you know, other personnel over there, and you're talking consolidation, and you're talking about the larger class sizes, something like. The impact is real from a community standpoint as a whole. On the municipal side, you know, we, as we said last year, we're a little bit behind the school department in relation to cutting personnel. Personally, and I've been advocating for the last several weeks anyway, you know, maybe we should be looking at moving forward with some of the more drastic cuts that we anticipate we're going to be making in the next fiscal year now to prepare ourselves for the level of services that we're actually going to be able to, to deliver. But I, I can't argue with the philosophy and thought process that's not into what's being presented to us this evening in order to minimize the impact as much as we can. But as I said earlier, there's significant risks associated with what's being taken here and whether we can hit these goals. I mean, we can certainly cut the funds, but, you know, in order to hit the goals and make sure that we don't have to go back in and plug the holes is what the challenge is trying to be. So not everything that I necessarily would move forward with, but I prepared tonight to move forward with the plan that's put forth by the administration to present at town meeting. And again, just forewarn the public that there's more to come, and there's, there's risks associated with what's being proposed here. And they impact the level of services that are going to be delivered in the next fiscal year if these numbers don't prove to be true, and we can't keep to it. So. Again, I applaud Loriann's efforts for putting this together, for listening to us, responding to the input that was given to them. And a job well done, and it's, it's, it's not an easy task. And it's, our department heads are going to have a difficult time managing moving forward. They recognize it. We recognize it. We, in advance, appreciate the efforts that they've put into this and recognize that we have to tighten the belt. So thank you very much. My good Loriann.
Mr. Chairman, based upon the feedback here, we will prepare a budget document that will make these adjustments. You'll see a pretty simple outline that will show the departmental requests, which will be the full amount they requested, the recommended number, which will reflect these cuts that you've seen identified. And I will be having a similar conversation with the finance committee at the meeting tomorrow evening as well, going through this presentation. In the past, we've had a joint recommendation with regard to what town meeting be asked to consider. Certainly possible that they could be differing recommendations coming through this process. As things become, you know, tighter and tighter each year, I'm sure the likelihood of different recommendations will increase. But my hope is that there would be a joint recommendation based on this current fiscal year. So I look forward to the conversation tomorrow night.
And Mr. Gilbert, before we get to that, when we start talking, thank you. Also, just some clarity again that what, we're going to review the draft spring annual. But if I, if I reflect correctly, the next meeting on the fifth is a general discussion about each item, and then there's the public hearing one, right before town meeting and the one after that, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Am I saying that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
We signed the warrant.
You would sign the warrant, I'll make it.
We signed the warrant, make it.
Make it, okay, yeah. So just from a process standpoint, because I know, because there's.
Tonight, you basically decided it's going to be on the warrant.
Correct.
But then we just sign the warrant on the fifth, and then the public hearing stays placed.
Because we usually talk about it on the fifth without the public, and then two weeks later with the public, and then we do it all over again on your night with the public, and then we'll sell. Mr. Gilbert?
So I'll take us through the, the warrant for the administrative slash housekeeping articles. I'll, I'll go very quickly through them. We, at this point in time, are not expecting any amendments to the fiscal year twenty five budget capital. But operating capital budgets, right? For the twenty twenty five snow and ice deficit, we're looking about four hundred thousand dollars for the deficit. I don't think we've applied any earlier since then.
It's this weekend. I'm not sure. They did snap, so I'm not sure.
It's snowing.
So crazy.
So that, that will be proposed to be funded with, with, with free cash. Again, another instance of the use of free cash. I'm sorry, I didn't, there was a question. No. Was, did you have a question?
Oh, that's good.
Do you want to ask it now, as we go with, please?
Before we send out the packets to residents, can we get all the boards necessary, select board, CPCC, school committee, finance committee, to get their recommendations on as many articles as you can? I think this town struggles getting recommendations out earlier enough to get on the packet, and I think that confuses residents. And residents have been very frustrated with that.
Mr. Gilbert?
So I would just say that any, we, we tell everybody when the, the warrant is being voted upon and when it's being printed, it's always that first week in May. The finance committee has asked for recommendations on the budget and articles sooner, and we're working to provide them that so that they can provide their recommendations. I know the planning commission has a hearing scheduled tomorrow night on the three citizen petitions. I assume that we'll get a recommendation from them. But to any board or committee member that wishes to offer a recommendation, the working deadline is, is May eighth, Thursday, May eighth, no, later than Thursday, May eighth, so that on Friday, May ninth, when we give them the printed version, your recommendation can be printed in the warrant. So thank you. Moving forward, a transfer into capital improvement stabilization fund. So that amount will be approximately one point three million dollars, right? Based upon the capital, the debt service. There was a point in time when we were putting that two million dollars in capital items into the fund and then taking it out. You're going to see that proposed as being directly funded from free cash. It's a, it's a more streamlined way to appropriate the funds, but I also think for everybody, including those at town meeting, it highlights how important that free cash is for our capital planning effort. So that would be our intention rather than transferring into Article Four. We are not projecting a transfer in under Article Five for OPEB. That's going to be funded in the fiscal year twenty six version of the, of this article, which is at a later point in time. There have been years when we've had a surplus, when we've been able to put funds in separately in the twenty-five port, in the current year portion. This will not be one of those years. We have, we still carry an allowance for the stabilization fund. I know you had a number that you could put in. So three hundred fifty thousand dollars is what we have to help. That would be funded by free cash to go into the stabilization fund. Appropriating funds to the solid waste stabilization fund, that usually is when we're projecting that there will be a, a balance left at the end of the fiscal year. That has not necessarily been the case in the previous years, so we ended up passing over that article rather than making a transfer in. Same is true for the water stabilization fund. There've been years when we've put that fund, funding in in October rather than making this transfer ahead of the end of fiscal year. We will look at things as we go through the month of May and see whether we can make that transfer now or not. Article nine, the PFA, that's a funding source that we put in place in case we want to add to that. We will not be doing so this particular fiscal year, having already made a transfer in, in October at town meeting. Article ten was sponsored by the school committee, but it was also in a version that was recommended administratively. It would be a hundred thousand dollars from free cash to go into the reserve fund for unanticipated or unbudgeted costs for special education, out-of-district tuition, or transportation. Those are funds that can be accessed by a joint control of the school committee and the select board, excuse me, during the course of the fiscal year. We continue to place hold this article for twenty Elm Street, although we do not expect a request for this current town meeting.
Just in relation to that, I think that should just come out.
Is there any?
This, this fund's already available.
Is there any, well, yeah, for this town meeting, just to give, I mean, in reality, right? Let's say, just to go back, let's say that the application hits the ZBA early May as was projected, right? I mean, in reality, outside of whatever council has to be there on behalf of the ZBA, which there's funds, Mr. O'Leary, correct? I don't see, I don't see any funds needed to be there if and when something happens where if the ZBA doesn't, or whatever they rule, right, if it's not favorable to the developer that he, the process, what they appeal, and then that's the point where we would need to defend the position. Is that correct? Am I saying that right? So I, and just so everybody knows too, I think, what's the number we have there right now?
It's like one fifty, I think, or something like that.
It's around a hundred fifty thousand.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't, I mean, I agree. I don't, I don't, I don't see how we're going to, we're going to use that up. Between now.
No, and there'll be October. We'll know better. We'll have, we have a hundred fifty thousand dollars right now.
That's what I mean. Between now and October, I just don't see, even, you know, even at the, the speed of lightning, I mean, with the hearing and everything, right? What's the average, six to nine months on the ZBA hearing or something like this?
It's got to be six months. But it has to be agreeable to by the applicant to continue. So it depends.
So, okay. Is everyone okay with that, since we don't need anybody? Mr. Massey, to just remove it?
Bree.
Okay.
Article twelve is fire station planning. We talked about this three or maybe four meetings ago with the fire chief and the presentation of a response time analysis. This would, to seek funding for programming, site selection, and cost estimation for a west side fire station, including potential impact, the potential impact on the proposed renovations to the existing Park Street fire station as well. So that was, proposed to be sponsored by the select board at the request of the fire station and the committee. And drawing a blank, I think it's two hundred thousand dollars for that.
Yes.
Sort of looking to.
Two hundred thousand.
Proposed to be funded by.
By the what?
Free cash. Article thirteen, prior year bills. I think everyone knows the purpose of that article at this point. I don't think we're aware of the prior year bill. I can't think of when this came up. So we may be passing that over, but we typically leave that on the warrant right up until town meeting in case anything comes up, so that we're able to pay the vendor as soon as possible. Articles fourteen and fifteen, our routine to hear from town officers, sorry, to select town officers and then to hear from town officers and committees who may seek to report to town meeting. Article sixteen is the operating budget, which is coming into clarity as we go through this process, both here in this room, at the school committee, and in the financial planning team discussions as well as, as well as the finance committee. Article seventeen, a one-time funding source for recruiting paramedic training. These are for the costs that are associated with the firefighters that we're looking to hire, that those costs being one-time in nature, sending them to, to train, training, whether it be paramedic training or other related expenses. Already have one article that's out there to, to funding this. We'll look closely at what needs to happen here in terms of how much we actually have to have. Do we have a number for that quite yet?
Yes, it was about a hundred and eighty for the recruit, which I believe would be free cash, and then the paramedic training was like sixty-eight to seventy-nine. Now it'd be.
Anyone who sees what I'm saying?
So a hundred and eight?
I think it was about a hundred and eight. Yeah, I had to double check.
And then seventy?
Yeah.
Article eighteen is to appropriate funding to our OPEB, and that's funded by Reason Appropriate, so it's built right into our operating budget. Is it three hundred and forty thousand dollars or four twenty-five? Four twenty-five, so we keep with the reason that we're talking, we keep up. Four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is not free cash. It's actually built right into our operating budget to be funded in the fiscal year twenty twenty six. Funding retirement obligations, that traditionally is a two hundred thousand dollar request. I believe, we think it may come into the law, but we haven't adjusted it at this point in time. That would be funded by free cash. Authorizing the treasury and to compensate the balance agreement, that's an annual article which basically allows for financing costs to be paid, rather than have to be directly appropriated and paid of other accounts that are held under the law. It's an option that requires manual acceptance. Receding the authorization to borrow, we usually do that in advance of the capital article, which you discussed earlier this evening. I'm not sure if we have any rescissions. I don't think we have, haven't heard of any. But we'll get something that we tend to hold on, the warrant, even if we're thinking it's going to be passed over so that we can clean up any outstanding borrowing in an expeditious manner. And the capital article would be to outline the report that you wrote on earlier this evening, itemized by department with funding sources and project descriptions. We talked about town building repairs. That's a fifty thousand dollar appropriation from free cash, and we're requesting it again here in the fiscal year. Article twenty-four is a tax title for closure procedures that are adopted, and this allows us to hold on to. on to unclaimed funds, rather than being forced to turn them over to the state treasurer, which is what happened under the law in the absence of this statute being accepted. And I put in there an advisory from KPU Law that came through on this within the past month or so, generated the request for this article, because it does not appear to have accepted this statute yet. Any questions, Mr. General?
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Is there any reason that we are not putting the cost of these on the warrant?
In general, he means in general, for all the things we said.
So, this version...
One-time recruit, one-time recruit in paramedic, under retirement obligations.
So, we, we will do that?
Town projects.
We will, we will do that under the description for the version of the warrant that's mailed to all the residents. This version is signed by the constable and posted in two locations in each precinct. I'm not sure that it gets a whole lot of visibility other than being posted by paper. I, I think what we've heard is to the extent we can work those numbers into the warrant that's mailed to residents, that we do so, which we would do under the description. So, for each of these articles, when we print the version of the warrant that goes in the booklet to each home, we add the recommendations, we add the description of each article, we may add the itemized listing, the operating budget in and the capital budget, and we've been more recently asked to add the dollar amounts into the descriptions for those that are not itemized, which is something that we're going to do.
Thank you.
The Hillview Function Building Demolition Project, it's come up in a couple of conversations, but this is the article that was submitted by the commissioners to request funding. They expect there'll be a bit of discussion at town meeting, and I believe they are preparing to hold a public discussion under, in their form, as commissioners in advance, to educate folks, and that would be in addition to a hearing that we would have here on the warrant article a couple of weeks before town meeting. And the proposed funding, funding source that we'll do is there between the... Sorry, I think it's a, Steve, they use retained earnings for this, they're not looking to borrow.
Do we have a date for that hearing? I mean, they're going to publicize it, I know, but...
I have not heard the date yet, Steve. I don't know, I know they have a meeting, they have a meeting, I think, this Wednesday.
They have a meeting this Wednesday to see where they're at, formulate recommendations. So, that's Wednesday.
I don't know if there's a way to, and that's important...
Yeah, I agree.
...to get out. So, I don't know if we can do like a post through our thing on the community connection, but also through, however, just to get out and then, you know, just so...
I believe it's going to be virtual.
Okay.
Six o'clock, Wednesday?
Mr. Massey?
The, the town, what was the cost that the town gave to Hillview last year for the roof?
It's the what?
They're not appropriated for the roof.
2.5, I think it's.
I think it was 2.6.
2.6.
From retained earnings?
They were authorized to borrow.
They were authorized to borrow that.
Okay. To be paid, to be repaid with...
It could be repaid through their revenue source, not the tax base.
Will they be here though?
Oh, I'm sorry.
What are we doing with that 2.6? Can we, why are we taking care of that?
That's on hold until this is determined. They didn't want to spend 2.6 million dollars on a roof and then determine that the building shouldn't be there anymore.
Understand, can you use the 2.6 to take the building out?
That can be, it can be reallocated. If the determination is to, to do something other than fix the roof, then we can rescind the authorization to borrow there and borrow it for another purpose. So, a town meeting would have to determine to do this.
Will we raise appropriate?
Right, they may, they may use, they may just use their retained earnings, they may use their retained earnings to do it rather than borrow.
Oh, Mr. Gilbert, go ahead.
So, the, the funding language is standard language to provide any and all options to town meeting, because again, we don't know what's going to happen at town meeting for it. Could be motions to amend on a main motion, but I believe they anticipate proposing to fund from any available source of funds, in this case, their retained earnings, the two, the, the dollar amount to demolish the building. I think demolition is an eligible use, it is an eligible use for borrowing, so we'd have to reappropriate the authorized borrowing, but my understanding is if the demolition that they wish to fund with available funds rather than borrowing occurs, we would be rescinding that authorization to borrow. I don't believe there's been any, has been any expenditures against that appropriation yet?
There may have been some then as far as consulting...
It was earlier than that though.
But, but yeah. So, are we rescinding the, are we rescinding 2.6?
So, we have not been asked to, because I believe their feeling is if this article fails and the town does not want to demolish the building...
They need to move forward the roof.
They need to move forward the roof.
Two passes to huge, huge separate cost discrepancies.
But I mean, one only happens if one, there's only going to be one, it's just a matter of, so if the town meeting votes, no, we want Hillview to stay, they're going to spend money on the roof.
What happened to, I mean, I, I still cannot figure this out. So, you, you knocked down the building and then, like, why wouldn't you keep the building in? I'm wondering what the plan is.
Is the Hillview Commission going to be here when they sponsor this?
Yeah. They will come, once, yeah, once they come to a conclusion, they'll come and make...
That's a great question.
...the board, yeah.
Though he's part of it, maybe he knows that he could answer the question.
But this is to go over this article that you're talking, but go ahead, no, go ahead.
So, so what is the question specifically?
What's the purpose if we knock down the building?
What's the plan? What's the long-term plan here? You knock down the building and then?
There, there's plans to expand the pro shop, but first of all, because there's, there's needs in the pro shop, the pro shop facility itself for...
Well, I thought this was the, this the function hall.
This, this is the function hall building, right? Then, there's serious concern as to whether or not it is fiscally wise to continue to invest in this facility without the return on investment. They came and they asked for 2.6 million dollars last year to repair the roof because it needs to be done, but there's also a significant amount of repairs that need to be done to the facility moving forward if we're going to continue to operate the way that it is. The return on that investment is not very good at all. So, what they want to do is propose an alternative, is get rid of the white olive, the white elephant here that's draining funds, you know, and long-term plan, what are they going to do as far as putting additions on the pro shop? Again, it could, first of all, they have to handle the carrots and electrify things and that nature, expand it a bit for an office for the Hillview Commission themselves, and then potentially some smaller version to service the, the needs of the office after, but nothing in the way of a, of a function hall facility. So, but they'll, they'll, they'll lay that all out for us as far as what the long-range plan is, but as far as the value of the facility that's there right now, it's not there. There isn't, the fiscal reality of the situation is that it's a drain on the, on the enterprise. But if the, but if the public would like to retain it, they're going to provide the opportunity to it, and they will move forward with fixing of the roof, and then talk about just continuing to patch up what needs to be done along the way, and then maybe a major improvement capital plan to retain the building.
I think it is important for the townspeople to understand the future plans of Hillview, because right now, we're basically saying, we're going to demo it, get some electric cars we might want to buy, we might want to put the pro shop addition. These are things, in my opinion, that should be stated, not in a warrant article, and I get it, but maybe something that we draft at town meeting.
Which is exactly what they're working on.
This is very, what's put in paper is very short-term. We're going to knock this building down, and then people are going to say, okay.
There will be discussion prior...
And then Facebook is going to go all over.
Your concerns are their concerns, and again, they're just doing what they believe is fiscally responsible as far as presenting some alternatives for the, for the select board to make a determination in town meeting ultimately. They know that just recommending, making recommendations, providing information, whatever town meeting decides, the commission is perfectly satisfied in carrying out that mission.
I think everyone's saying the same thing, and, but again, they're going to be here, right, on May 5th, and maybe, which I want to see it. I know they're going to have their own thing, but I think it would get them a little bit better of an audience than their own meeting. I mean, not, not the one with the...
It may not be May 5th itself, it may be the public hearing on the, on the warrant article which comes after May 5th.
Yes, that's what I mean.
Yeah, not May 5th specifically.
But, excuse me, but at, at some point though here, this board, you know, and the public will see it fully, and then, well, I assume they're going to also do it on a town meeting floor on the night.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. And again, once, once a report is, is, is generated, it'll be circulated to the board before, before a meeting, before you, you won't see it the first time at a meeting.
Okay.
You know? So, they're just formulating it.
First time.
I'm sorry?
First time.
First time what?
This was not, no, I know, not first time seen, but first time put it up as far as not explained, long-term plan, as far as Hillview coming here and presenting.
I think I'm pretty consistent as to what I've said all along.
Yeah. Put the cart before the horse.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Mr. Gilberto?
To address the initial question, the finance director's just reminded me, we can move the authorization for rescinding borrowing, we could move it to after this point in time as well, and you would know. If you wanted to know the outcome of this and then decide on rescinding...
Or you just include another article for that? We can do it in October, too.
You could do it in October. There are options to address it, but...
Yeah, instead of so much money moving around, that might be a good idea, instead of saying, hey, we're moving forward with the demolition, you approve this, the next one will rescind the 2.6.
And I, to explain, the reason that it shows up before the capital, so early is because it's before the capital article to allow us, if we need to reappropriate or rescind in advance of the capital article, to do so. Some years we've had to do that, others we haven't. This year, we don't expect that we're going to have to based upon the borrowing plan that we talked about here.
The only, for your, the only complication on the Hillview roof is we funded like $51,000 in transferring from some old article, which has to be used for something of an equal term or longer, so that's going to be going based, we can't move, because if they use their own retained earnings and then not borrow them, they can't move it to the general. So, we might have to somehow save that for another time for something else.
The $51,000.
Street signs.
Street signs.
For two, need to be a Hillview.
It has to be a Hillview. It has to be a Hillview.
A really big street sign for Hillview.
Really big Hillview street sign.
It says Hillview. Okay.
Thank you. Article 26, the fiscal year 2027 revaluation, that is something that works on cycle, board assessors are asking to fund this now, so that there's enough time to get somebody on contract to help us with those services, and I believe they are recommending funding with the overlay reserve that would be, or has been released for this purpose, so we'll not require a free cash for this particular project. The next two articles were submitted by the school committee. They are the authorizing of two of the fields at the middle high school field complex. One would be the multi-purpose athletic field to be named the Charles Kooch Senior Field, and then for the high school softball field to be named the Jennifer Solley Vant Field. There's a blank in there for the numbers. I'm not familiar with the site having field numbers, but I asked us to pretend if he could provide us those numbers to the extent they might exist, we could properly address it. But for those who don't know, the multi-purpose field is the grass field that's just to the north of the, or behind the turf field, and then behind that, sort of to the right or to the northeast, is the softball. This brings us into the citizens petitions. I'm going to take them as a whole for a moment and then just offer a brief comment. So, first is one that we received from residents seeking to rezone the entirety of residential zone D, which is a residential zoning area that happens to have a larger requirement for minimum square footage than some of the other zones here in town, it's 120,000 square feet. The request is to reduce the amount of area required for a house lot to 40,000 square feet, which the, the petitioner states is the equivalent of the area that surrounds this zone in the area currently zoned as residential zone R. It would allow for the ability to create additional house lots from existing properties, but it would be subject to frontage restrictions, which I do think, you know, for some purposes could be a potential challenge. And the planning commission is planning to have a hearing on this very matter at their meeting tomorrow night here in this romantic, will be virtually. The three that follow were citizens petitions for so-called MBTA zoning.
Never heard of it.
One of which is very similar to the version for zoning considered at October town meeting with the change of adding a cap on the total number of units and specifically allowing that there would be age-restricted 55-plus housing as a valid use within the zone. The second of the three would cause a, a update, our site plan review, special permitting to reflect this. That is identical to what was submitted at the October town meeting last year. And then the third is to update the zoning map with a new zoning map date. It's not identical because it's a new date, obviously, based upon this. And to answer a question that I know has come up from folks, we have talked with town council, they've provided an opinion that's been provided to the select board and the planning commission, which states that because the Article 30 and 32 are not identical, that they ought to be not only referred to the planning commission and subject to a hearing, which has already been scheduled, but that they also would be able to be considered by town meeting at the spring annual town meeting adjournment. It's unknown how the attorney general and the executive office of housing and municipal communities would react if Articles 1, 2, and 3 were approved. We believe they would look favorably at this approval of Article 30, that the site plan review, the special permit, might not be as critical in their evaluation of compliance, to use the word. So, we're not sure how they would react to that, but that, that article is identical to what was submitted, and that's a key difference because of the negative recommendation that was received at town meeting in the absence of a favorable recommendation in October. Something I just, to close out this, there were seven other articles that were on the highlighted list in the middle that were identified as articles that the select board could potentially sponsor if they wanted to have their own articles identified. I did state very clearly in the first review of this listing that if that was going to happen, it would need to be by vote on the select board. I felt an obligation based upon your direction to submit the action plan, to put those articles in front of you, but I do not think it would be fair or accurate to say that they automatically go on the warrant, given the, the nature of the ongoing discussion the community's had. So, you know, to me, if you, if you felt like you wanted to add those articles, they would need to be by a vote of the board to put them on the warrant, you might pay them. That was lovely.
Yeah, I don't think the, some of those were ideas that the CPC was discussing, and they did not go forward any, so I don't see a need for them to be on the article. Mr. Massey, please. No, you raise your hand.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. This is petition.
Please go. No, I didn't, yeah, I didn't think to do this.
As the, as the petitioner, Mr. O'Leary, how does 55 and older, you've created the petition, but as the, as a petitioner, how would you, 55 and older, when the law is for families, how, how would that work?
The restriction.
Is it pretty contradictory, or is it...
Now, if you recall, last October, there was discussion amongst the board members here and to suggest to the planning commission to have these two amendments incorporated into the main motion. The night of town meeting, prior to town meeting, I met with the planning commission, requested that they be included, and they chose not to. Those two amendments didn't, didn't come from me, didn't come from my head necessarily. They were approved and drafted by town council for the planning commission's consideration if they wanted to do so, to have it fit within the confines of the warrant article and have it comply with, with the laws, with the law as it, as it was written. So, again, they opted not to include those, and again, that was directly related to the concerns that were raised by some of the residents in the proposed district, and to allay those concerns, those amendments were being offered, but again, not included. So, to allay the concerns of people who live at Martin's Landing, we're going to allow by right the 55-plus, which will allay those concerns and set them aside. Same thing, some of the concerns that were raised at public hearings and discussion prior to those articles being considered in October was, there was some discussion and some information provided, of course, the accuracy of the information, but information provided that potentially led people to believe that some of the units could be split and sold as two units, single units being split and sold as, as two units. That is not true, not necessarily the case, but that's what people were led to believe. So, as a result of that, the proposed amendment to cap the number of units at the number of units that are currently existing between Edgewood and Martin's Landing would do exactly that, and would not allow for any sale and then division of any of the units beyond the current number that's there. That's already what it allowed. That's already what it allowed.
I'm sorry, Mrs. O'Leary. I don't even know what you're saying. You're going all the way around, I asked, it's a 55 and older requirement you're trying to put on it, but.
No, 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 no. You don't understand.
The law of the MBTA requires families, so how does that, it's really kind of like.
Again, it's already been vetted.
How can you?
Vetted by who? Town council.
How would town? I didn't see any town council. Town council's opinion said to go to CPC.
No, I was talking about last October, Mr. Massey.
Last October.
They vetted this, he did say that we could include this, we just didn't do it.
He said we could include it. So, again, I'm not reinventing the wheel.
Miss Gonzalez wanted to access.
At all. All we're doing is providing the town with an opportunity to come into compliance.
Let's clarify that.
All we're doing is providing the town with an opportunity to come into compliance with the law. Again, since October Town Meeting, there's been significant changes here. The Supreme Judicial Court has ruled that the law is constitutional and enforceable. Right? That's being taken care of.
That has nothing to do with my question. And Mr. Chairman, I'm also, it's fine, Mr. O'Leary, don't worry about it.
Excuse me, you're interrupting, you asked a question. You may not want to hear the answer.
No, we're going on and on and on about things that aren't related to the question.
But again, it's not. Of course it is. Of course it is, you don't think so, because you don't agree with it, and you're not supportive of it, but that's okay. That's okay. But doesn't mean.
No, the town, the town, okay. No, I mean, the town.
And again, there's more information that has been provided.
I'm sure that, I'm sure, I mean, right now, we're just listing them, and I am sure that we're going to have a lively debate at the next two. Well, actually, yes, two, we have the fifth, and we have the other, we didn't choose that date, or maybe we did, I just don't have my calendar, but again, this is for the listing of them in the article, in the warrant article. I'm Oscar Gilberto, so I'm taking over.
Isn't he going to keep the law for referrals, I mean, not keep the law, to CPC?
They're having, no, no, they're having, no, no, they don't have, no, not, a citizen's petition has to be on, we can't do anything about that.
No, but it doesn't go through the CPC though?
As well, as like.
They will allow for a recommendation one way or the other.
Yeah, they're talking about it tomorrow, I believe, so tomorrow.
But they can't choose to not put it on, it has to go on.
And again, Mr. Chairman, just in relation to the action that the majority of this board took just a couple of months ago, in instructing the town administrators to sign the action plan to be in.
Interim compliance.
What's it called? What compliance?
Interim compliance.
Interim compliance, in order to be in interim compliance.
Sorry, I'm using my second language.
The majority of this board instructed the town administrator to sign an action plan and submit it to be in compliance with the law, to give us until July to get it done. That action plan that was submitted committed this board to putting forth for consideration articles to come into compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. And again, you, Mr. Chairman, again, rightfully so, deferred to the planning commission to come up with a plan to come into compliance and offer that to the community, recommend a plan to come into compliance to town meeting. They have been unable to do so, they have chosen not to. So I believe it's incumbent upon this board to offer a plan to come into compliance to town meeting and follow through with what we instructed the town administrator to do.
I mean, either way.
I didn't interact with that.
No, you voted no. You voted no, or Mr. Massey voted no.
Hold on, but we're going to, I mean, it's, the point is this, it's a citizen's petition, it has to go on, it's a moot point, doesn't really matter what the select board or CPC says.
And we're not going to put, I would put forward another plan.
It is important for people to know that Steve O'Leary started that.
And again, as I stated, as I stated previously.
No, no, I agree.
But as I stated previously, Mr. Chairman, as I stated previously, there's been a lack of leadership, and a lack of.
I don't agree with that, they're, they're.
And a lack of, excuse me, it's a lack of leadership and a lack of certainty.
You cannot accept.
And a lack of certainty, excuse me, this was after we took, excuse me, after we took the vote to have the town administrator to sign an action plan, there's an obligation on this board's part, and I believe the planning commission, and based upon all that's transpired since last October, to put forth a plan, as we said we were going to do, for the public to decide one final time if they want to come into compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. Again, after, I only offered these, this is the first time in all the years I've been involved.
It's fine, just explain it at town meeting. We've talked about it, you know.
No, you haven't talked, you don't want to talk about it, because you don't want to hear.
No, but that I do agree.
Excuse me, no, no.
I mean, right now, if I had, if I had five publics in the select board, I could verbatim tell you what everyone on this board would say.
But we have directed the town administrator to sign an action plan.
I won't, I won't vote.
And you voted no anyway, so.
Right, and I will vote for winning.
This is what we decided to do, if that's the case, you know, if you're not going to recommend it, you should notify the state right now.
We could support your article.
Mr. Chairman, you should notify the state right now that we have no intention of coming into compliance. The only reason that we have an opportunity to come into compliance is because someone offered a citizen's petition to do so.
You.
Right.
Nice job.
Right, because we have an obligation to bring it to them to do it. There's been a court decision, there was a huge, huge question mark in October. There's a huge question mark in October as to whether or not this was legal or not, that's been determined. That's a huge decision-making point for people. Right now, we have $134,000 in a document management website overhaul grant that's pending, again, subject to MBTA Communities Act. $54,000 cybersecurity grant that we've granted, subject to the MBTA Communities Act. We have $55,000 ADA compliant, ADA compliance.
Hold on, hold on.
ADA compliance for buildings.
But, but hold on, Mr. O'Leary.
We have $100,000, excuse me, we have $100,000.
Excuse me, we're doing this, we're doing this in two weeks, and at that point.
No, 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 but Mr. Chairman.
Oh, we are.
We have $100,000 boroughs road and Park Street small bridge projects that are all subject to MBTA. So if you want to say, we're not going to do it.
Do what the government tells you, or they're going to fire you.
Then you let the, then you let the, you let the state know that you're not going to do it, and those grants go away. They go away.
But these are.
They don't, they don't.
Hold on.
Yes, they do.
That is not.
That is true.
Mr. O'Leary, please, that's it.
It is effective.
I'm about to get with myself, and this is all, so, but we're going to.
Are we going to take a position?
We're going to take a position when it's time to take a position, but today is not it. Today was just to review this list, so Mr. Gilberto can rearrange things, as we've done some things, and then he can bring it to us on May 5th, where we're going to have a lively discussion, where we're probably going to repeat the same things we've all been saying for 14 straight months, that, like I said, I'm not kidding, when I think that like, if you guys want, I can put the best show on ever, no one here can speak, I can tell you verbatim what each of you are going to say, because I have it memorized.
Oh, because it's beaten to death.
So, but we will talk about it then, and these are good points, and then at the public hearing, for sure, we're going to talk about it again. So, but for tonight, we got through the list, is there any other articles, Mr. Gilberto?
No.
Any like secret ones I don't see? Okay. And.
As far as the potential.
At least we have a good break.
The whole O'Leary family, pretty excited.
At least we have a break.
It's what? I'm sorry, I can't hear.
It's like the whole O'Leary family.
What whole O'Leary family?
He said that it's multiple people at times.
My wife, my wife, my brother, myself, that's three.
I did not sign.
And the most divisive guy in the world.
I'm sorry?
And the most divisive guy in the world.
Well, I, you didn't sign it.
That was.
That was pretty good, that was pretty good.
I'll get it, Tom.
That was, that was, that was pretty good. Okay, Mr. Gilberto, do you have a report for us? Nothing to do with MBTA?
Mr. Chairman, when are we going to determine the order of the articles?
I thought we just did.
We did? No, we were going through the articles, but I mean.
Oh, you mean to maybe, well, what's a suggestion? I'm open to them.
No, to me, I think that this is going to be of significant interest to a lot of people, obviously, and I think it should be considered, we should ensure that it's considered on the first evening.
I can, does everyone agree with that? Rather than, yeah.
They're just adjudicated early.
Okay, I think that, I think people will get behind it. Mr. Gilberto, do you have a recommendation on any that you feel have to go in front? And then, after we talk about it now, you know, we have these clickers, so, you know, it's not going to take six and a half hours to vote.
I mean, my recommendation is the order that they were submitting to, so to be candid, I don't object to it.
No, but if I said, since the board wants to put these further up, are there any you don't want, like, is there anything you feel like should get priority over this? I'm not winning the spot, but like.
Everything he has before.
Yeah. Okay, so let me make a suggestion. I'll, I, I, come on, give me.
I mean, to be clear, we customarily put zoning or citizen petition articles at the end, so that's why I put them there.
But on this one, I do, I do think that first night, call it a day, and then, you know, I mean, if we have to make it to a second night, people can hear about select town officers.
No, I think that's like two administrative ones, like, you know, regular business ones on the second night, I think it might be a less crowded.
But to ensure, right, I mean, because the operating, but, I mean, it doesn't really matter, I mean, some of these are, there's no. If we did them, this is just a flow, if we did these immediately, is that going to like mess everything up?
Those go pretty quickly.
I mean, it would, only strike me as unusual, but I don't know that it would mess anything up.
Just so we can have the discussion, and then maybe, you know, we can all shake hands, I can hand out cookies.
I think that that could work.
What does everyone think about that?
What's the benefit of putting it up early? I guess I'm just not.
The point is that this, just in case, so, we don't want it to go to, if it does go to a second night, and this is what a lot of people are coming for, that's the benefit of doing it, so, you know, we.
But then do you risk not having a quorum second night, because nobody cares about?
You don't need a quorum, it's not special town meeting.
In your town meeting, you don't need a quorum, only special.
You don't need a quorum to vote on any of those articles?
No.
No, no, you need special town meeting, you need 150, this is a regular town meeting, so if ten of them show up, we need a.
In a town meeting, it's those present voting.
Five people could show up and.
Yes.
Okay.
That's it.
All right.
Lorian, do you have a?
I was going to say, do you want this to set you move for your budget?
Right?
No.
Okay. I mean, how about this, since, since some of them won through, okay. Okay, here's what I propose. Can we, can we move these things, can we think about this and do this on the 5th?
We could, yeah.
Okay, why don't we do that? Just because like, like, I do agree, maybe just, it'll be.
You and I could talk together and come up with something for the board to consider.
Yes, we'll just. There are some, I agree with, with Lorian, that maybe we'll have, we'll make sure certain ones maybe are first, and then that, and then, you know, I mean, the snow and ice deficit, I mean, what do you want from me? It is what it is, you know, we could put that after.
Those usually go very quick. So the challenge you have is your financial articles, which these four petitions are not.
Right.
They need to happen in the FY '25, then FY '26 article, so that's something we need to consider.
So maybe.
I think you leave it alone.
How will we do this?
I'm one of five.
Since we have time, why don't we have, here's the same, and just a draft of what another one would look like, and then we can either say yes or no. How's that? We'll just do that, and, you know, Mr. Gilberto can think about it on the 5th, rather than me just try to like, you know, like throw darts over here at this list, as Lorian looks at me like I'm going to, I'm going to throw something at the studio, and he keeps talking.
Maybe switch Hillview with this, just to swap those two out. Just reverse that order. Put Hillview at the end.
Well, we'll see, we'll see what Mr. Gilberto comes up with, so.
I'm going to look to you, Mr. Chairman, to help, because something you might find acceptable.
And I just thought I'd do that football over here. I'm trying, I'm trying. Mr. Gilberto, your report, anything good?
I don't have anything to add. Good, I have nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
Board member reports, I will start with Mrs. Gonzalez.
I'm ready.
I don't know why, but I just.
Okay, I got it. Community Impact Team is doing a recovery support group. The group meets every Thursday night from 6:30 to 7:30, providing a welcoming space for individuals in recovery, as well as the families and loved ones of those affected by addiction. This meeting fosters a supportive environment where both those in recovery and their families can connect with others who understand their unique journeys. It offers an opportunity to share experiences, gain encouragement, find strength through community. All are invited to share resources, discuss challenges, and build a sense of belonging in a compassionate and like-minded group. Whether you're in recovery or supporting a loved one, this group is here to help you, stay motivated and supported. The group is led by professional peer recovery coach Emily Earl, who is, how long has she been on? Not even a year, right?
Yeah, it's a little under a year, yeah.
Yeah, we have two, a male and a female, so Emily will be leading that group. Programs are free to those living or working in North Reading, must be 16 or older to participate in the group, and no pre-registration, dropping only. You can find the dates on the website, so it's a little hard to find the Community Impact Team on the website, but they have a Facebook page, I think they're on Instagram also. But the, it's every Thursday night from 6:30 to 7:30, and it goes right through to December, April to December. So a great program to take advantage of if you need it, and that's all.
Mr. Walmer.
Oh, nothing, I'm good.
Mr. Massey.
Thank you.
Yes, the Fire Station Building Committee has put out the RFQ, so the RFQ was on the street for architectural firms, for the article that will be placed on the June Town Meeting. The only at risk with the town really is, quote unquote, is our time, so the contract for that architect, you know, the selection process will take place leading up to town meeting, so we will have our selected architect in hand, but we are not, we are holding off on negotiating and executing that contract up until town meeting says, okay. So we anticipate on that, just wanted to make this board aware that that is moving forward. Have some interviews right up until town meeting, the first week of June. One question, I actually, I'll get to this, I want to welcome New Business in Town, Top Tier, who is at 79 Main Street next to Flush, across from Walner, they build custom sheds, pergolas, gazebos, et cetera. So good to see at least some new business going on on Main Street, especially at vacant sites, that's great. Last thing I want to ask this board is, has North Reading done any farmers markets and/or town business days, and that might be town day, but more farmers markets probably set there.
There used to be a farmer's market, because my wife followed here, and then.
Kent Tower used to run that.
Kent Tower used to, but there were other reasons why it kind of stopped. I can get you an answer next, because she did.
What helps?
No, 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 it just, I think it was just demand, and then, and then COVID hit, and then it just really didn't come back after that.
Yeah, it was sad.
It was great.
Because I think they were starting to actually, at the time, you know how food trucks started to be like a big thing, they started like getting food trucks to come in, because they already had their, what was easy about food trucks is they already have all their, their permits to serve food, like, there's no, they're already there, like, it's like the ice cream truck, you already got it, you know, so.
That's cool.
But no, that's a good question, yeah, but I don't know where that left, did that go through Parks and Recs, was that?
It was Land Utilization Committee that was volunteering to do it, and.
A lot of the same people.
Yeah.
A lot of great farmers in town.
And there's a.
Yeah, I mean, it was a lot from out of town that were coming to.
Yeah, there were a lot of out of towns, and then there was, there was some discussion about, there was some.
A fish guy from Wilmington.
There was some local vineyards who were looking to sell their, their wine, but again, was unable to give taste tests on public land.
Could you get like a single day permit?
Yeah, yeah, is there a? Yeah, yeah, is there a...
So that was, that was an issue, and again, it was an ongoing, it was like, I don't, I forget how often they were doing it.
Weekly.
It was weekly.
It was weekly.
Yeah, weekly, you know, so...
I think, like, Reading does that, where you can have, like, you know, the pot carials actually goes to Reading's, and they serve their beer, which is business in our town going over there, so it'd be nice to have, it would be, it would be non-in camaraderie for that. Thank you.
Can I just, I'm sorry, I just wanted to add with that, those, those peer recovery coaches, those two, I just wanted to add that those were funded by the opioid money that were awarded to the town, so very fortunate to have them and have been able to serve them.
Okay. That's a great thing, by the way, that they're doing that, it's really wonderful. Yeah. Just a very, just, I said this last time, but just as a reminder, the 16th Annual North Reading Townwide Yard Sale is Saturday, May 3rd, rain or shine, from 8 to 2 p.m., and sponsored by the Friends of the North Reading Council on Aging, and if you're interested to stop by the senior to pick up an application, deadline to register is April 18th, so you're almost out of time. Thank you.
My house, you can take everything, so it's the TV and the scotch. I have too much stuff. Mr. Gilberto?
Sick of being redundant, I think it's important for this board, on old business and new business, to ensure that we have an opportunity to come into compliance with the MBTA 3A law. We have $843,000 worth of grants that are at risk at this particular point in time, and that's just now. Again, we signed an action plan, has the town administrator signed an action plan, and we have the responsibility to put forth an article to do so, and I felt it necessary to do so because we weren't doing it, and the Planning Commission is not doing it. They sat here, four out of the five of them said they had no intention of signing the action, yeah, signing the action, signing the action plan.
Don't make them sound incompetent.
And recommending, excuse me, and recommending, they did not recommend us signing the action plan, they said, it's your prerogative to do what you want it to do. And they followed through, they haven't provided an opportunity for the town to come into compliance, and I think that's irresponsible. I think it's our responsibility, based upon the action that the board has taken, to provide the town with an opportunity to come into compliance. It hasn't been done, it's unfortunate that it took a citizen's petition to do it, I happened to spearhead the effort first time in all the years I've been involved, but the necessity to do so, I, you know, I, so I would urge my colleagues to think longer house before the 5th, to approve an article, to come into compliance and give the people the opportunity to do so. We just went through the budget hearing, money's tight, and we're leaving money on the table unnecessarily, and we will have to come into compliance, we will be soon, and some other third party's gonna come in here, if we don't take the action to determine